Okay.
All this media board supervisors together, budget legion, led by Supervisor Conover. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Conover. Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yeah.
Ms. Bramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Frazier. Mr. Drossy.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Merlino.
Here.
Mr. Straugh.
Here.
Mr. Wild.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Ms. Seaver. Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Farmers established.
Like, welcome everybody this morning. We'll open the footage of the floor and public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, please come up to podium, state your name for the record. Any issue? In, oh, public comment, we'll move on to approving minutes of the October twenty first and November fourth board meetings, both by Supervisor Bruno. Second by Supervisor Straugh. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here.
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to pass over the Play of the Month Ward. Kevin Heydose is at another meeting right now. He'll be down a little bit later. First item business. The Chair would declare a proposed public hearing open, a proposed local law number four of two thousand and two, and I'll ask the clerk to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number four for the year two thousand and twenty-two entitled "A Local Law Further Amending Local Law Number One of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two: A Local Law Fixing the Salaries of Certain County Officers and Employees of Warren County to Include Interim Salary Increases." Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on October twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten a.m. in the Supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensbury, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number four for the year two thousand and twenty-two will be heard concerning same. Copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing up. Anybody wishing to address the board on this public hearing, put it up to the podium again. Are any members of our board who would like to address anything on this public hearing? Seeing none at this time, I'll leave that public hearing open and we'll move to the public hearing number two. Ask, please read.
The Warren County Sewer District Industrial Park has completed its annual assessment of the cost of the increase and improvement of facilities apportioned to the Warren County Sewer District by reason of the intermunicipal agreement for South Queensberry, Queensberry Avenue Sanitary Sewer District. Excuse me. A benefit to tax roll for two thousand and twenty-three has been completed showing the annual assessment on the lots and parcels of land in the Warren County Sewer District in proportion to the benefit which each lot or parcel will derive therefrom. The assessment rule describes each lot or parcel of land in such a manner that it may be ascertained and identified and shows the name or names of the reputed owners or owners thereof. Together with the aggregate amount of assessment levied upon each lot or parcel of land, a copy of said assessment rule is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the below stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website. Pursuant to Resolution five seventy-one of two thousand and twenty-two adopted by the Warren County Board of Supervisors at their meeting on October twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Warren County Board of Supervisors at the Board of Supervisors Meeting Room in the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensbury, New York, on the eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten a.m., at which time and place said Board of Supervisors will hear and consider any objections that may be made to the assessment rule.
Okay, again, we'll open this public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on the sewer sewer district public hearing, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record. And any members of the Board of Supervisors have any comments on this proposed law? Oh, I can see the sewer is not a hot topic, so the chair will be closed. I'll declare this one closed. Next, we have a public hearing notice on the two thousand and twenty-three tentative.
Notice is hereby given that the Board, the Budget Officer of the County of Warren, has prepared and filed a proposed budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and the Board of Supervisors will meet in the Supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center located thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensbury, New York, on the eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten a.m. for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the tentative budget of the County of Warren for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-three. And that at such hearing, any person may be heard in favor of or against the tentative budget as compiled or for or against any items therein contained. Copies of said tentative budget are available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website. Pursuant to Section three fifty-nine of county law, excuse me. The maximum salaries that may be fixed and payable during the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to members of the Board of Supervisors and to the chairman thereof are specified as follows. Members of the Board of Supervisors, nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars each; Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, twenty-three thousand dollars. Further notice is hereby given that the following is a summary of the tentative budget of Warren County for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-three. Gross appropriations of one hundred and eighty-four million, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars less the amount of one hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, which includes interfund revenues and surplus appropriated, but does not include sales tax credit, leaving a balance of forty-eight million, six hundred, five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be raised by taxation.
Okay, this public hearing is declared open. Anybody wish to address the board on the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-three tentative budget? Please, again, come up to the podium, state your name for the record. But take any public comment. Any supervisor wishing to comment? Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought it up before and one I'd like to really reach out to Supervisor Thomas and for his budget, once again, just a phenomenal job, and I'm so happy he took this position this year again. It was another difficult year, and I think he does an awesome job. My concern is some of the raises that were going out there that where the employees that haven't gone to committee and were just put into the budget, and we've been back and forth in this over the last couple of years of, you know, how in the process to do it, and, you know, we do it one way and it was told to do another way, so we do it that way, and then it goes back to this way. And then I find out that, you know, salary increases that were put in there for some employees, and I don't have a problem with all of them, but some of them I think are a little excessive due to the factor that the, we just got raises across the board, and one in particular, it's like a fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollar raise in a year. I think that's a little excessive, and I said this before, as I knew as we were going to go into giving the employee raises out of out of agreement with the with the unions, but I think it was a needed thing, and I split behind it, and I knew it was going to snowball and the costs is in return. It went across the whole county employees, which I am all right with, and I can stand up for the taxpayers and justify that. But some of these are outrageous, and I really think that I would like to be able to pull those salaries back and have them go through committee like they should now that they have passed budget. But before we've gone to through committees and all the process, and it goes to budget and gets turned down, and then it comes back from budget and they're put in there without going through committees, so I, I, I think it's a double standards the way we do things, and I don't think it it should go, we should have a certain process, and, and, and it's either one way or the other, but not both ways. If I'm not confusing everybody, so I would like to be able to pull those out of the budget for now to bring them back to committee.
Any other public comments on the, on the budget? Anybody from the public wish to comment on the budget? Supervisor.
Sure. I want to agree with my colleague that this was a tough year, and I understand the Budget Officer had a lot to work with and that we did increase the wages of our employees, which I fully supported. I do think it was a lot to have the Budget Officer also be the Personnel Chair. It was a lot of responsibility in one person and making those decisions about performance evaluations and whether or not they warranted raises is a concern to me, so would have liked the opportunity to provide more input on the budget. I'm not on the Budget Committee, and I wasn't on any of the Budget Teams this year, so I didn't have that opportunity prior to now, and we do, we are increasing the tax levy to, which to me is problematic when we know that people are struggling right now with costs of food and other necessities that they cannot not avoid, and there's other things that they need to buy that they are being charged sales tax on, and we know our sales tax revenue has increased significantly. So I would have liked to see us lean a little bit more into our sales tax revenue that is continuing to outperform any other year. And also our general fund. I know the treasurer wouldn't necessarily necessarily like to hear that, but I think that we should have done that this year. I've advocated for that in the past to make sure that we are not levying more than we need to, and finally, I think there were other areas besides our employees' wages where we could have tightened our belts and just done a, been a little bit tighter on our expenditures so that we were not increasing the tax levy. I understand that the tax rate is going down a tiny bit. However, many of the people in Glen's Falls and other places in the county, their assessed values have gone up, particularly in the city. We had a revow, so they're going to be at least a third of the people whose property value is significant significantly increased, increased. Wow, I can't talk this morning. So their, their taxes are going to go up, and it's going to be a problem for the taxpayers of the City of Glen's Falls, who are paying more in taxes in the city and more in taxes on their county tax bill, and it's a real problem for me to support this budget. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Supervisor Bramer that while the levy may be smaller, the whatever. Because of the revaluation, and I know this firsthand, the value went up significantly or the assessment, if you, if you will. So so that's going to be a real problem, especially as she stated, the citizens of Glen's Falls, so have a real problem with that. And again, I applaud Supervisor Thomas. I wouldn't want his job. I think he's done a spectacular job because we all know where we started from, where he started from with his budget with respect to the, to the tax cap, and I think he's done a great job, but nonetheless, this is going to be a great burden especially the citizens of Glen's Falls, property owners. And not at a very good time, not that there ever was a good increases, but so anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Each of my colleagues speaks the truth, but the other reality out there is, is that public sector employers, as well as, as many of the private sector employers are having difficulty recruiting individuals and retaining individuals. And I think you have to take a look at the fact that a position that remains vacant has a direct impact on, on the citizens of Warren County as far as the delivery and operation of programs and services. So we're in, in a position that a lot of entities are, whether they're government, nonprofits, small businesses, larger businesses, they're having a hard time recruiting employees. They're having a hard time retaining employees, and one of the ways that, that you can recruit them and retain them is by increasing salaries or, or sweetening benefits, and, and I think that that's what a lot of us have had to, to do in order to ensure that operations are delivered efficiently and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Supervisor Diamond, Andrew.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak, make a couple of comments about the budget. First and foremost, as a member of the Budget Committee, I think Frank did a good job getting us to where we are today. You know, he had some challenges to get underneath the tax cap, and he met that, but I don't believe that our work is completed at this point in time. So I want to point out in the budget at to my colleagues from Glen's Falls that the actual dollar amounts going up in Glen's Falls is five hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy more dollars this year than in two thousand and twenty-two. When we look at the economy at scale at this point in time, there's mixed opinions on what the economy is going to be like in the future. Inflation is going up, is up over eight percent. National Grid is forecasting that natural gas may go up thirty percent. Electric, thirty percent. We all know what prices are at the gas pumps. The other day I was at the grocery store, and I bought a loaf of bread the size, it was dry bread, cost me almost five dollars. So I'm concerned about how this economy is going to impact the taxpayers going forward. Within this budget, there's a couple positions or appropriations that I don't agree with, and I want to point them out at this point in time. We're creating a new Director of Planning and Community Development in the Planning and Community, in Community Development Department at a cost of a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I don't believe it's necessary to do that at this point in time. In this budget also, there's an increase to the Warren County Economic Development Group of fifty thousand dollars. I want to applaud Frank on that behalf because their request was over two hundred thousand more than last year. In this budget, there's also an increase of ten thousand dollars to the city, to the Warren County's Local Development Corporation. I don't agree with that. Matter of fact, the question that I may raise at some point in time is, have we closed any loans in the last year through the LDC? The other point I want to point out is this, and this is part of the budget, and I mentioned it when we had our last workshop, is this comprehensive plan that we're going to vote on today. Looking at the economy scale, I don't feel that it's necessary or the timing is right to improve a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars in monies to be appropriated for a comprehensive plan. People may argue we got a plan for our future. Under Chairman Conover's leadership, back when he was chairman, one of his priorities was to request from every community capital infrastructure projects. We submitted it. Those plans are ready to go. All we need to do is to apply them, and I want to thank Chairman Beck then for the oversight or foresight of thinking about capital projects back during his chairmanship. So if you look at the, the objections that I have with this budget today, they total three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars. I think I want to put the taxpayers first. So I'll be voting against this budget today, and I'll be voting against the comprehensive plan also today. Thank you.
Supervisor. Hey, Devon.
Yes, in, in, in specific reference to our Local Development Corporation, what does any supervisor do in this room when you, an employer has an interest in coming to your community, whether it's the North Country or Glen's Falls? We, we, who do we go to for advice and for counsel? We go to our local EDC. We go to Jim Cephalon, who can intelligently attract and convince a potential employer to come to our North Country, so the the EDC is also an organization that, that's faced with inflation within their own organization. They asked for a ten thousand dollar increase, fifty thousand to sixty thousand dollars, the, the, the Local Development Corporation. Money that I believe is just in keeping with, with our inflationary times. At the end of the day, who do we go to? Who do, who do we talk to when we need advice and we need counsel? Any community within, within this county in terms of job creation or in terms of advice as it relates to childcare, as it relates to advice, as it relates to residential subdivisions, so an increase that was necessary and something that I fully support.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to touch briefly on what my colleague Glen Ball said about this comprehensive plan. I've seen my share of these over the years, and I've been people have come to me in various positions presenting these. And the problem that I have with this comprehensive plan, you spend a lot of money, but I always say to them, this is all well and good, and, and don't misunderstand me, you need to plan for the future. But many times I say to them, okay, this is all well and good. You've got a lot in here. Where's the funding? That's the problem with a lot of these, that you spend all this money to develop the plan, but you have no funding to implement a lot of the things in there. So I think at this point in time, I'm not in favor of funding that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Thomas.
While I appreciate all the discussion about the comprehensive plan, that money was allocated by this board with Resolution one fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-two, so it is not part of the two thousand and twenty-three budget, just for point of information.
Anybody else?
One clarification.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the budget, I, two weeks ago, spoke about our transparency and our involvement here as a board, recognizing based on the comments from our, our Budget Officer, that the chairs of all the committees and the Chair of the Board were involved in this process, but that only was fifty-eight percent of our board. The rest of our board did not have an opportunity to weigh in at what should have been repeated budget meetings and provided with information well in advance of an opportunity to do a resolution to accept that vote. That being said, before us today for the Town of Queensberry, we're looking at approximately four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to our Queensberry taxpayers. This is on top of a fifty-six point seven percent increase from the Town of Queensberry in their taxes. I believe in our committee process, but I believe that we can do much better as a full board. I believe if we involve each other and we respect each other and we engage and we ask for each other's opinions, that we would have come up with a, a solution here that would not have resulted in a tax increase to any of our municipalities. But because we are a Board of Supervisors, despite much advocacy for a Board of Legislators, we sit before you having to think solely about not only our our town taxes relevant to our towns, but our county taxes relevant to our towns and to our city. And what we're seeing is an increase. Now, you may say that's a modest increase, but as a mother that has struggled, I know exactly what is happening when we are increasing even ten dollars, twenty dollars, thirty dollars. We saw this board decline to even give a tax break in gas taxes, where we watched people in our own community, in our own county employees drive across to South Glen's Falls for a break on their gases because it made a difference. So in addition, when I'm looking at this budget, I'm also thinking about how, in fact, we can circumvent the process of our committee structure. That is what has occurred, and I know my supervisor from Glen's Falls mentioned this, but when you have a Budget Officer who is also the Personnel Officer, what we see in this budget are many unfunded positions. Those positions should have gone through the personnel structure. The few committees that I sit on, I sat on one where we unanimously passed a resolution to the Budget Committee. They did not meet again, so they never heard it, but the Budget Officer was in attendance. We asked for a full increase for particular employees that did not meet their years of service. We're picking and choosing how to apply those types of standards in our salary charts. And what's unfortunate about that is here today, we see many unfunded positions that this board, and, and some funded, already debated on all year long. And I think of examples in our Tourism Department and other departments where some sharpened the pencil, like probation and public health, where frankly, we should be investing in those departments and giving them the much needed resources. I believe, like I've heard supervisors from this board and from my town previously mention, is it time to take a pause? I still say we take a pause on our structure and make it better, but perhaps we take a pause in the budget, go back, sharpen the pencils, involve a hundred percent of this board, and come back with a better result. I, I disagree with the way that this process took place, and I'm certainly hopeful that we can and we should do better. I will not be supporting this budget today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any else? Supervisor Beatty.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the last eight years, I voted twice against the budget because of spending that I thought was not needed, decisions that I thought weren't fiscally responsible to the taxpayers, and sadly, I'm going to have to do it for the third time in nine years. There's a number of areas in this budget that plainly and clearly to me, we could have done a little better job. I applaud the Budget Supervisor, Mr. Thomas. It's not a lack of hard work. The guy's a worker. But I think we can do even better. The fact that my neighbors in Queensberry have only kept a 56 point seven percent town rate increase. It's astronomical. I'm getting phone calls left and right, and then they come back and say, oh, by the way, we're going to crank up your county bill too. That's just a, 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 a start for me personally, and for the numerous calls I'm already fielding. We had record sales tax revenue in two thousand and twenty-one, record. Record sales tax revenue off the charts in two thousand and twenty-two. We are only ten point two percent above two thousand and twenty-one. Let that sink in a little bit. We have record revenue coming into this county. Record revenue. And yet we still want to increase their taxes significantly, a couple million dollars. We had a, we had an assessment done of property value in Warren County that increased one twenty-three billion dollars, which means all that property now, which, which is worth more, will be, will be taxed more, even if the rate goes down, they're going to pay their taxes significantly. Glen's Falls and the colleagues from Glen's Falls are going to take a big bullet. They're going to have to have, see a major increase in the county tax, even though the tax rate went down. They will be paying significantly more as well as my colleague from Godberg. They will be paying significantly more as well as many, many homeowners in Queensberry.
So let's be clear here, what we're doing. We're asking for the county residents to cough up even more, a lot more, millions more, even with record sales tax revenue coming into this county. I feel, and I always have been, if we're not good stewards with the taxpayers' money, what's our real purpose up here? That should be job one. How we spend your money, and it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And if we can't do a better job with that, well, maybe some of us shouldn't be up here. But I know Saratoga County didn't increase their budget at all. I know Monroe, this Town of Monroe decreased their budget, decreased significant tax rates. I just think we could do better. I really do. This is not the time, this is not the economy to be, keep asking, we need more and more and more of your money from your wallet. With four dollars and one cent a gallon of gas, with six dollars and twenty cents for three of my land legs. I mean, really, if people aren't fixed incomes, I'm getting calls left and right from the seniors. I don't want to tell them, I'm not going to support the budget. We've got to do a better job. We've got to lower this budget. We've got to lower the responsibility and the demand we're putting on the taxpayers. And if we do, our record sales tax, when are we going to do it? If we can't do it now, somebody tell me this from when we're going to do it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking as Finance Chair, we have unprecedented inflation in the past twenty years, so it seems unreasonable to expect the county budget to go down. We accommodated everybody in the county with cost of living increases. This was supported by the board, it was advocated by people that are going to be voting against this budget, and it has increased the budget by four point five million dollars. How can we have it both ways? And also to say that this budget is going to cost the taxpayers more is an untruth. Twenty-two cents on the thousand is the reduction. On your tax bill, when you get it in January, you're going to be paying less in your taxes. We just passed the budget last night in the Town of Chester. Not an easy affair at all. We just passed the budget last night in the town of Chester, not an easy affair at all. And even though there was significant increases in special districts, uh, we've created an EMS district and and provided them much more funding. We were able to absorb those costs with no net increase on our town tax. Other towns may not be in the same position to be able to absorb such costs, but not all towns had seen these. Our taxpayers in the town of Chester are going to see a reduction overall in their tax bill. This budget was a tough one to put together. The process is not perfect. Certain things stood out in in this whole process, so we'll line up new ideas on how to have this process be better through the years. It's not much different than last year's process. I wasn't involved in in that budget process at all last year. But that was my own choosing. I could have sat in on any of those meetings, just as if any supervisor here could have sat in on any of those meetings as well. It's a tough one. There's no doubt about it, but this budget has my full support. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Holden.
Thank you. I'll admit, I'm I'm really conflicted on this budget. I see some incredibly worthwhile funding in there, like things for Cornell Cooperative Extension. Programs that strengthen our communities and prepare us for what might be coming ahead. But I also see in there circumvention of the county's committee process. I see I see raises that committees debated and rejected incorporated into the budget. I have a real problem with the good and the bad, so out of me, the best you're going to get today is an abstention. Thank you.
Supervisor Shaver.
Thank you. Um, I won't go on and on about this because I think we all have a lot to say. Certainly, all twenty of us are here because we're we're type A personalities who want to advocate fiercely for our communities. But I do want to just correct something as a factual matter. We heard from our Chester supervisor, our acting county administrator, and what we hear is that our raises are. But we're putting our employees first. Doing something that's likely overdue, listening to them as they come by the hundreds into our board meetings to talk about their work environment. Cost us four point five million. Yet today, we all know that our sales tax record numbers. We heard from our treasurer for reading our emails just a week ago that we're at six million. More, six million. So we've dipped into our savings. I know our treasurer has told me that. We still are ahead of the game because we've had record sales tax. We've had record off tax. We've had record growth in the values of our properties. So if we sit here and we want to blame. The increases, the quality of life. And the value to our employees, I think that's a shameful thing to do. I will not partake in that. What I will say, though, here today is that there was a way to cut those additional dollars that we're looking at increasing the budget by. And I would have attended all of those budget meetings. So what is untruthful. And misrepresented here in front of us today is that we would have known about those budget meetings. They do not advertise. You will find them in no public notices. You will not find them in your emails. The only people invited were committee chairs of standing committees. Last year in twenty twenty-one, every single member of this board were invited. We put out a schedule, we sent it to everyone. We also included a complete inclusive environment. That is a fact. So I would have taken part of this had I had the opportunity and known when they. Were taking place, even though I don't sit on the budget committee or chair of standing committee this year. Um, but I am very proud of the transparent process that occurred in twenty twenty-one. It's unfortunate we continue to go backwards, but what I would very much like to see is every year we say we're going to incorporate new ideas, let's do it. Let's make our budget meetings open to the public like our colleagues from Glenn's Falls do. They have them in the evening, not at ten in the morning where people at work can't attend. They have them publicized. They have them on on Zoom. They have them covered. They invite the public. And that is something that this board should do, but again, that's a good idea, Mr. County Acting Administrator that has been talked about for years. We continue not to implement these process processes, and here today, what we saw was a step backwards in transparency. So as a point of reference, no one. That is in the non-union schedule will be getting a cost of living increase. We don't have that in the budget for next year, but we all do for our supervisor positions. That's in your budget. I'm opposed to that. We're giving your budget officer a three thousand dollar raise, fifty percent of and a fifty percent raise. An additional twenty-seven percent raise to our chair of the board, three thousand dollars to him. That is a problem when we sit here and we talk about trying to save every penny. But continue to give ourselves raises, ignore important. Emphasis on our employees' well-being. That would not serve any of us well or constituents. So those are the facts. That's what's in your budget, and it's unfortunate we're taking steps backwards. I I know it's a lot of hard work, but together we can have a much better result. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Khan over.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two points. First. Uh, on the point of assessments, assessments simply determine fair share. That's the means test by which we operate our municipal government and our county government. Taxes are determined by levy. Let me say that again. Assessments determine fair share. And so periodically municipalities have to uh, do a revaluation. I've had to do two as supervisor and may end up having to do three before I get out of Dodge, and I can tell you, it's no picnic. And so what you see is that we have to take all the municipalities to full value, and it's based on that full value that we determine. Our share of county government. Well, let's not confuse assessment with taxing. Now, sure, with assessments, some people go up, some people go down, some people stay the same. If they went up, they're upset that they went up. If they stayed the same, they're upset because they didn't go down, and if they went down, they didn't go down far enough. I mean, I mean, I see Jack laughing because he knows that to be true. So let's not, let's not confuse those things. And not that I need to um. Move to the defense of the budget officer because he's clearly um, demonstrated to all uh, his skills in the budget. But the methodology that he uses in the budget is he takes the last full year of sales tax revenue. So for example, in the twenty-three budget, he took the last full year of twenty-one. We haven't finished twenty-two yet, have we? And that's the revenue that he applied to our budget for twenty-three. In twenty-four, he will take the sales tax revenue for twenty-two. And apply it to that budget. So to suggest that the taxpayers don't benefit by an increase in the sales tax is simply not true. It's just that the budget officer's approach is to not count his chickens till they hatch. So I don't know if I need to say that again, but his methodology is to take the actual received in twenty-one. And 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 apply it going forward. Twenty-two, when that comes in and we have our audited statements that will be applied in that year's upcoming budget. So it's not that these revenues disappear, and my only other comment would be, a budget is a spending plan. It can be amended. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Schrout.
Oh, thank you. Um, it's the government that sets the standards. It's the government that creates the quality of life in your community. It's the government that repairs the roads, maintains the culverts, improves the stormwater. It's our employees. Who we want retention. We want to show our appreciation. Benefits in retirement is up. Costs are up. We are building in codes to assure that the quality and safety of our buildings. And other structures are safe. One of the reasons why we're a revenue generator. Is because we spend money to assure the quality of life in our county. That brings in the revenues. If you've ever noticed, those other places. Who have this slash and burn mentality. You can tell. They nosedive. Their economy is in havoc. They're not increasing any sales tax. It's important that we have. Good budgets, I believe, right? Like Swan. Department heads. Have put together a good budget. It's responsible. And it maintains the quality of life that will bring further revenues. And people that do the slash and burn are going to do just the opposite. They'll kill this count. Thank you.
Supervisor Lake.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something was uh, words were used um, that misconstrued what I had said in that. I have blame. The increases. Uh, for wages that we have approved. I blame them for our budget increase this year. It was a statement of fact. There is no blame on that. I voted for those increases. Just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you. And if I may speak as any administrator as well. Um, it was brought up about the community development. Uh, the the count. And the county planning. That there is now the the director that is a part of a reorganization of that to allow for the transition. Where there will be a retirement there. So one of the things that goes through in the budget process is also looking at the departments. And what their requirements are for the upcoming year, when some of them reorganized. And this is is one of those. I think if we look at their their budget altogether. And I'd have to get confirmation on it, but it's fairly neutral now from that department. Um, also, I would like to to say that in this, all the department heads come forward. With their department requests that include salary increases. And we look at those to see what can be accommodated. And we have not accommodated all of those requests. Some are in here. And for all those directors that had come forward with a sincerity, had gone through the evaluation process. For their employees, put those forward. And had requested, whether it be grade step or grade and step increases for their employees, and we did not accommodate them this year. I'm saying I'm sorry for that. We considered it well. But this is the budget that we have before us at this period in time. We cannot forget that everybody also received within the past couple months, and it will continue forward if this budget passes. That there was a five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollar increase, which is a a significant cola, so. To to keep that in mind as well. We do the best we can to take take care of the people that work for the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to comment a little bit about that restructuring initiative that uh, uh, our supervisor county administrator. Pointed out, if you look at the tentative budget online, I think it's page um, forty-eight. And you do a comparison. Of costs associated to the two twenty-three budget in GIS and planning. And compare it to the twenty-two budget. It's about a twenty-seven percent increase. When. Someone does a restructuring. It should include a savings in regards to performance measures. In this particular case. We're costing more to the taxpayers, roughly twenty-seven percent more at the bottom line compared to two thousand twenty-three, so. I wanted to add clarity to that, and if and if I looked at. Page forty-eight of tentative budget. And and pointing out if I'm wrong, I believe there's two hundred thousand dollars posted in that budget. Two two twenty, in two thousand twenty-three for this plan. So that's completes my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor.
Thank you for coming back to me for a second go. I just um, want to respond to some of the. Comments earlier from our acting county administrator about the levy. I'm looking at our packet from last time, and it says, the proposed budget calls for a levy of forty-eight million, six oh five, seven eight eight. Which represents a three point nine percent increase from twenty twenty-two. That's one million, one point seven million approximately. And it says it will mean that the tax rate decreases by approximately thirty-two cents. For a thousand dollars of assessed value. And yes, assessed value has a meaning here, and every time someone's assessed value goes up, it will impact the. Bill, their tax bill. So when someone in the city's assessment went up. Twice, there's people who have, you know, that's just anecdotally, it's gone up a hundred percent or tens of thousands of dollars. And they see an increase in their tax bill from the county, and they come to me, I'm going to refer them. Up here to the county administrator and to other colleagues is to explain what has happened on their tax bill.
Supervisor Wilder.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'm just curious, um. What happens if this budget doesn't pass? Does the building shut down? I'm assuming that's not going to happen. So I'm wondering what we're, what the end result is. Because if we go past the budget, I'm I'm assuming that there's some way for us to continue. And I I'm assuming that we don't want to. I mean, stop providing the services to the citizens of the county. So I'm curious, what's the next step? Because that may make a difference to some of the supervisors here.
I've supervisor Lake to answer that question.
We would be running off the twenty twenty-two budget, and that there may be some. Questions about that, because what about the raises that were instituted? Uh, after we had adopted the twenty twenty-two budget, how would those be carried through? And I'm going to have to look at the county treasurer. Can can you help us out? Or help me out with the the answer to that?
I'm not sure at this point, so I guess I'd have to look back at it.
Yeah.
We amended the budget for twenty twenty-two, then theoretically it should carry through. Next year.
Okay.
But I have to check.
But we would be running off the twenty twenty-two budget, same as in towns when they don't. Vote in time. Uh, it's a previous year's budget. You just keep going.
So it's a problem, Mr. Chairman. What does that, what does that mean to us? Right? The chairman, our our treasurer. And said it's going to continue and move forward, but what does it mean for the plans? That we have had for our next year? And who gets them, or is it all budget amendments and budget changes as we go forward?
One of the complications will be on all of our union contracts, which do have uh, uh, increases built into that that contract. But that would not be reflected in the twenty twenty-two budget that we'd be operating by. So where does that? Put all of the union workers? Does that keep them at the twenty twenty-two level? These are all the questions we'd have to look into and get back to you with the answers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to pass the budget. Uh, from my perspective, uh, if we need to make modifications going forward, I think that's the most prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, supervisor?
I I'm going to support the budget as proposed. People work hard at this, uh, and uh. Uh, I don't know if we really have a great deal of discretion on the issue. Uh, the. Personally, uh, the taxes on my home on Hunter Street went up significantly in the city of Guns Falls. Uh, believe it or not, I'm happy to pay. Uh, it's the price that I pay for quality of life. It's the price that I pay for uh, the services that I receive in the city. And they're very good services. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, public comment. So supervisor supervisor Runyon.
I just want to say that I support the budget. This is a flexible financial document, and if there is excess sales tax revenue available. Later on, if it's necessary, we it can be. Budget adjusted. I support it.
Now, public count, please. State your name for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Christine Norton. I am here representing. Uh, my business is ADK Advisors, which is a consulting business, and ADK Excursions, which is a um, tourism business, business on Lake George. Just a couple of things. Um, I was asked recently what, and I I think I might have gotten it wrong, whatever, I was asked about what's the most important. Thing to the county and to its people. And by far, to the people, it is the taxes which you are all talking about today, and it's it's incredibly important. Um, I think I talked about other things as well, just the broader community. Um, but I am someone who grew up. Um. Socially helped. Uh, I grew up in John Burke Apartments. My mother, you know. We did everything we could to make ends meet. I'm very fortunate not to be in that position now, but I totally understand. Why that is so important to the taxpayers and especially the lower income taxpayers. So here's the other thing, three things. That's the first point. The second point is. Transparency. Transparency, if, you know, if the. Transparency, if, you know, if the process wasn't transparent, maybe that could be improved. And I think everyone said it was, it is not an easy job. I've done it my entire life. In doing my CEO treats every penny as a prisoner. So I know how important it is to save every penny. That said, what I heard was that there was circumvention where things were decided on. And I, I participated enough in just hearing these meetings that I know that sometimes not everybody can get to meetings. And I know, you know, things may not be as transparent as everybody likes. But circumvention is a big word and it's a big problem. Um, again, the budget process is never easy. Um, but I think if things are circumvented, I think those things should definitely be highlighted and spoken about. And then I did have a third point. Um, I'm struggling to remember it at the moment. Oh, I know what it is. Um, with regard, again, I've dealt with multimillion dollar budgets my entire career. The deal is, if you're restructuring, you're absolutely right. The costs should go down. So that's one key thing about budget management. The other thing about budget management is that if savings, you know, if we have savings, we'll put it somewhere else, or if we have leftover, we'll put it back into the budget. That very rarely happens. So again, I understand that they're all good points. But if they're not transparent, and if you haven't done it before, if you don't have a record of putting money back into the various, um, into the various budget pockets from excess, then I think you've got to look hard at that. Because if you don't have a precedent, are you really going to do it? Go forward. Thank you.
Any other comments on budget? Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, uh, this, uh, Bill Lorenzo gave this to me. It's section three sixty-one of, uh, county law. I'm not sure what part of county law. But anyways, if you don't mind, no, uh, maybe I can answer the question on that Mr. Wild had as to what happens. It says failure to make appropriations, uh, in the event that the board of supervisors shall fail to finally adopt a budget for the ensuing fiscal year honor before December twentieth, the tentative budget, which with such changes, alterations and revisions as has, as shall have been made by resolution of the board of supervisors shall constitute the budget for the ensuing fiscal year. And the appropriation resolution with such amendments as may be necessary to make it conform to such budget shall be deemed to have been passed by the board of supervisors as of such day.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So over the years of, uh, watching New York State, uh, put their budget together and seems always, uh, an untimely overdue process. They seem to go into the wee hours of the mornings, so we're told in the paper, uh, of them working. So we haven't told December twentieth, uh, to come up with a budget. You know, can we have a special meeting where all the board of supervisors are together for this? Since it involves all of us and, and hammering out some issues.
Certainly we'll work it out. Sure.
I mean, I, I would like to, to, to see that because, you know, to, to, to bring us all together onto an even, you know, uh, playing field and that. And, and I know I have a property in the city of Guns Falls, like my property seemed to have gone up over, uh, 100% uh, in assessed value, which in the city, it's not a big of a difference, but in the county bill, it, it will be. So, um, you know, I, I, so my colleagues from Guns Falls, I, I can understand and the services, I, you know, believe we do get, uh, a fair in the city. And, you know, I, I've always uh, for the longest time had a house in, uh, Guns Falls and, and a house in Queensberry. So, uh, so they, uh, would like to see if we can't, um, get a, a special meeting uh, for this board so we can go over, um, you know, and fine tune it a little bit more. No disrespect over Frank. I have the utmost, uh, supervisor, uh, sorry, supervisor Thomas, uh, but budget officer. And, and along with the $3,000 increase, you know, I, I feel he deserves it because it is, it's a gruesome process. And many years ago, when I started, I, I always asked Frank, I really never saw him in a, uh, uh, sitting on a committee meeting, but he was at every meeting about figuring out what the budget officer actually does. Um, it, it, it's a heck of a job. And again, I, I applaud, uh, Supervisor Thomas for really a, a very hard job. Um, but also too, I think it should be an opportunity that other supervisors have a chance to uh, put in their opinion to speak and see where we can help save some more taxpayers. Thank you.
Supervisor Brainerd.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I know we, we debated quite a bit. Um, if that's a motion to table it to a special meeting, I would second that. I also want to acknowledge the comments from my colleague from Thurman about amending the budget later. I, I do appreciate that. I don't see us though putting money back in our taxpayers' pockets. Sales tax revenue starts coming in. Once we put out the levy and collect the revenue from our taxpayers, it's not going back into their pockets. So I would ask for a little bit more time to sharpen our pencils, to build on the work that's already been done and get us a little bit tighter budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is, uh, if it, if it's not a motion by the law.
We're, we're in a public hearing right now. We have to close the public hearing and then procedurally do the other things. But I'd just like to address one thing. Here everybody talking about assessments, uh, assessments going up, assessments going down. That's a local issue. That is done by each locality. That is not done by Warren County. So assessments going up, assessments going down, or assessments staying the same. There's nothing the county can do about assessments. That, that is a local issue. Uh, locality decides when they want to do a revow. And the locale is responsible for the revow. I look at the rates here on our sheet. You all have the sheet. The rates are going down in seven of the, uh, eleven communities, I believe. Um, so the county tax rate goes down because somebody's assessment went up. Obviously, it may be neutral. But that's, but their assessment going up is not the, it didn't happen because of the county. That happened because of the locale. Anybody does a, a revow, which we've done them in our community and, and, uh, you know, it can be painful on a local level. We are responsible for that. Not the county. So, and then that is how the taxes are determined, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it. That's how it's done. So please, the revows done were done by the localities. There's a good reason probably. Most of the localities did it. So that is not on Warren County. So I just, I gotta share that. That, that's not caused by Warren County. That's done by the locality. So is there any other comments on the, uh, on the, yes?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think anybody was saying it wasn't, uh, the, uh, local council cities that were doing it themselves. They, they have full control over that. Sometimes in this room, I haven't had a revow in thirty years, thirty-five years. Is that fair? I don't know. Guns Falls there last year. John Bird there last year. I mean, this, so, so you say, well, it's up to the town. That's totally agreed. The state allows you to basically do it when you want. They encourage you to do it in certain timeframes, but they don't make you. That's not the issue. The issue is we're increasing the taxes in my mind significantly to the county taxpayers. That's a fact. There's millions more in this budget than there was last year. And we have record sales tax dollars coming in. And so now it comes down to how do we spend the money? That's where it really comes down to. How do we spend the money? What do we spend it on? I agree. Employees should get a raise in more money. I supported that. I supported other things and other things I didn't support. I don't support county government growing or adding new positions here and there. I don't support that. I don't like a bigger government. I don't like to have the taxpayers say, hey, I gotta pay another position. You're looking at you to fund another position. Well, I didn't have a say. Well, you do have a say in your representatives. If your representative feels they want to go to government, then they'll ask you for more money. Well, I'm not going to be one of those guys that do it. Now, I totally agree with spending my money on roads. Basic services. I'm all for that. And for a number of things, I supported Sudi Arundhat. I probably won't support additional dollars going forward because they keep asking for more and more. There's got to be a limit. There's got to be a time when you gotta say, hey, the cookie jars are a little empty. But I have supported them. I was a huge supporter of theirs and I always will be. But the fact of the matter is, we as a group, I feel, this is my personal opinion, can do better. We can do better for the 65,000 residents in Warren County. I know what the counties are doing, but I don't compare us to other counties. Other counties are doing worse. The reason we have an, have an excellent mix of individuals with different opinions and different, uh, experiences that contribute to the whole, uh, unity of this county. And I personally believe we can do better. And I would fully support when it comes time to table this budget. We have to December twentieth. Let's go back to the drawing board and just do a better job for the 65,000 residents. That's all I'm asking. I don't think that's a big ask. So that's what I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Last word. Supervisor Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To be clear, the $11 million increase is on us. It is in our discretion, unlike my supervisor from Guns Falls mentioned. This is within our discretion. And while our residents vote us in to have a say, what they don't realize until we get here or maybe they do realize it and we hope something will change, is that we don't get a say until today and then it's limited. So my supervisor from Queensberry, who says what happens? Well, we have till December twentieth. So I, I would fully support an idea to come back to the table, let all of us represent our constituents, not just 58% of us. A hundred percent. And let us all have an opinion, a voice and to represent our taxpayers. Because last year you saw this budget pass because everyone had a voice. This year, you're looking at a very slim margin for it to pass. And I don't know if that's the message we want to send to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed and then declare the first public hearing closed. Move on to the reports of.
I would not like to move on, Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you. We had a motion in a second that you asked to wait till we were closed in the public hearing.
But we have, uh, we have a vote on resolutions, right? It's in the resolution vote. You want to do it now?
Yes, we just spent an hour debating the budget. I think we should do it now.
Well, we have it in our packet. So you're making a motion away the rules? Is that how we do it?
No, it's just abling.
Oh, you know, I made the motion to table a resolution. Is that what you're doing, Supervisor?
I thought I made the motion, but I'm confirming my motion I made earlier.
Go ahead. Which, what do you, which, uh, resolution? All you gotta do is make a motion to table.
So we can have, you know, one or two, uh, evening, um, sessions. So the public is more involved in, uh, the, the or supervisors, the rest of us can all weigh in, uh, for the benefit of our taxpayer. Along with the benefit of.
This is resolution six sixty-six. You concur?
Six sixty-six, adopting the budget.
Oh, my God, Frank.
Table six sixty-six. Until when? Well, tabled until.
We've got to do the correct process. So what's the time to get it advertised and get it out there and it, and set it up for an evening? Next Thursday night? Can we do that?
Turkey Day.
We're, we're gonna have to, uh, see what everybody schedules. Table it to a special board. How's that?
Yeah, sounds great.
Be announced very soon.
Okay, do you second?
In the evening. It will be in the evening.
Do you second that Supervisor Brainerd?
Evening, yes.
Okay. We'll have a, let's do a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDebbett? Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Jurassic? Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
So there are only 471 votes in favor, so the motion to table fails.
That's a shame. Okay, now we move on with the reports of, uh, committees. My report's fairly brief this month. Uh, October twenty-first, attended the last board of supervisors meeting. Twenty-fourth attended committee meetings, twenty-fifth attended committee meetings. On the twenty-sixth, I, October, I attended AKA local government and AAT meetings. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the inter-county meeting. On November second, I attended Adarantik Regional Chamber of Commerce, uh, meeting at Park Peter, where uh, Budget Officer Frank Thomas and Acting County Administrator Craig Leggett, myself, discussed Warren County to the business, with the business community. On November fourth, I attended Board of Supervisors budget presentation. On November fifteenth, I attended Personnel Committee Administration interviews. And on November sixteenth, I attended a, another AATV, another AAT meeting in Warrensburg. And that's my report. So go on to report my chairs. Supervisor Conover.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, uh, I think we have two resolutions in front of you today. I think they're self-explanatory. Uh, but one of the items that was, um, dealt with at Public Works, uh, was a report from, uh, Superintendent Hejos, uh, relative to the, um, um, idea of the county, um, uh, participating, uh, great, uh, more in the recycling business. And the, uh, it appears on first blush that, uh, it's something that we should be, uh, considering. Um, it could represent significant savings to our municipalities. Uh, and so I'm sure you're going, along with the composting, I think that on the recycling side, you're going to be hearing more about this going forward. And I think it's a, a very interesting idea and, um, and I'm sure that Public Works will be, uh, discussing this further and vetting this further. And anyone interested in the subject, I would recommend that you, you know, attend the meetings or contact me directly. And we'll try to get, or Superintendent Hejos, and we'll try to get you whatever information we have. Thank you.
Okay, along with that now, uh, it just happens that our employee of the month happens to be a, uh, Public Works, uh, employee and he works in the engineering department and his name is Adam Baker. And I'll ask that Superintendent Hejos and, uh, Adam, come up and, uh, would you like to say a few words, Kevin?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Uh, I'd love this program for employee of the month. I just always have a very hard time of picking one person in DPW because I think every single one of them deserve to have employee of the month. But with that being said, uh, Kevin in the new stone, this is Adam Baker. Adam's one of our assistant engineers in our engineering department. Uh, and I'll kind of read you the application that I sent in for employee of the month. Um, Adam has gone over and above in his position as a assistant engineer in DPW. Since coming on board with the county in 2016, Adam has made a significant contribution to the Department of Public Works. He has single-handedly, uh, inventoried numerous assets along our county roads, including culverts, guide rails, signs. Uh, upon, upon losing two individuals this past summer in the engineering department, uh, Adam took on the task of managing all our construction projects and managing contractors, uh, keeping a timeline and schedule with them, uh, as well as making sure that they, they, not that any of them would, uh, but they were putting down the right quantities and the right amounts, uh. He, uh, he's also overseen the striping as well as the, uh, um, striping, uh, ceiling of our roads and our, our guide rail replacement work. Uh, Adam has also redoing our permit system within DPW, and then within DPW feels that Adam should be uh, recognized for a significant contribution that he brings to the county and to DPW, and he is truly an asset to have at the county. So, Adam Baker for employee of the month.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Conover for your report. Supervisor Leggett, Finance EMS.
Thank you, on, it's Finance Met on November third, there are nineteen resolutions before you, the standard ones, six oh three and six oh four for budget amendments and, and changes, and then six forty-eight through six sixty-four, on these, as you look through them, there's, um, moving, moving items out of the where do you start, there's been a long meeting here, so we'll go with going to each one here, and when it started, but, um, two for the airport regarding, um, repairs, taking things out of reserve, increasing capital projects for the airport T hangars, then there's the, um, closing of cap- capital projects, then building the grounds, there's the appropriation to rehab county building reserve to Public Works to cover costs of installation of gutters. Then, clerk to the board, appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus, which we dip into quite a lot. Uh, this is for the medical examiners and coroners budget. Now, when all the budget there, findings from county administrator, authorizing appropriation from the vehicle reserve to fire prevention for a new vehicle. Then authorizing agreement with the New York State Industries for the disabled to provide mail fulfillment services for Warren County. Then authorization for appropriation from the general fund unappropriated surplus account to cover the attorney's budget, cover deficits and budget codes, mostly the insurance, finance, um, County Treasurer. We have a new thing that's coming on, um, that we're required to do with the governmental accounting standards board number eighty-seven regarding leases, so we're setting thresholds for those leases. County Treasurer deleting outstanding taxes on town of Queensberry tax map parcel that's listed there, as well as the next one deleting outstanding taxes, town of Queensberry on another tax cap, tax parcel. And then also the canceling and correcting assessments and refunds or chargebacks of taxes. Then there's the authorizing an extension of agreement with capital markets to provide advisory services and on the bond sales, they've been doing a good job for us, we'll continue on. Then from information tech appropriations from the computer reserve fund to purchase computers. The occupancy tax coordination, we have authorizing appropriation of funds from oc tax reserve to the tourism budget. Take a look of which ones are in there for that. Public health renewal of grant agreement with New York State Department of Health. Now, for childhood poisoning prevention program. From sheriff authorizing funds, uh, to the sheriff's office budget to cover, and again, this is coming from the general fund unappropriated surplus account to cover the deficits created by significant increases in gasoline costs, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, amend in Warren County budget for the same. That's it, finance, appreciate your support on, thank you.
Supervisor McDebbett?
Um, yesterday, our local development corporation met, uh, one of the issues that we continue to talk about and grapple with is, is childcare and the, the, the need for a quality environment for children as well as, uh, uh, employees feeling comfortable that their children are in a very safe environment, uh, so we continue to talk about it, we continue to look for approaches that will help, uh, enable, uh, uh, this industry to go forward and provide help to, uh, uh, someone that's, uh, attempting to go into this direction in terms of starting a childcare center. Thank you.
Supervisor Bremer, ARPA?
Just a point of order, please.
Sure.
And I, my apologies Supervisor, it may not be a point of order, wouldn't in the past, when a committee chair give a report, there were questions, if there were questions about the report we were allowed to ask or about the committee, you want me to wait until pull it to the floor later?
I didn't see that you had your hand up.
That's okay, do you mind if I could just ask a quick question?
Uh, question of.
About LDC.
Sure.
Thank you, uh, may I direct it to the chairman, thank you, um, Supervisor, uh, you're the committee chair for LDC, and I, I don't expect you to necessarily have an answer for me right now, but if you wouldn't mind reporting back to the board regarding the compliance of open meeting hours with the LDC, I'm continually very concerned over the last several years, and particularly this year, even most recently, as the meeting you just referenced, which is why I'm bringing it up, that the meetings, the, the YouTube, the transparency that they're required to have, having government funding isn't complied with, it's usually late, many people aren't able to get this ahead of time to attend or to even watch what took place. It's a continual problem, and we talked about it a lot last year, but I'm hopeful that as Chair of LDC, that you would go right back and make sure that these are now done in, in all compliance with the law. And there's been some, some difficulties, but can we come up with a solution for that?
I certainly will make that effort, uh, Supervisor Seaver, I will communicate that to, uh, uh, Jim Sipson, and, uh, hopefully, uh, if there are issues, uh, we'll make a very honest and concerted effort to, to address them.
Great, I look forward to that update next month, thank you, Chairman, thank you.
Supervisor Bremer?
Thank you very much, on the ARPA committee, we have been meeting regularly, and I appreciate all of the hard work of the committee members and the planning department staff, Gina and Sarah and Ethan, who's kind of doing double duty and Woon, being both on the committee and helping his staff, so it's it's been a lot of work, and we have done some really great things, and I want to point, um, people to the website because they have been updating it regularly to indicate things that have been, um, passed both by the committee, the ARPA committee, as well as the full board, so if you go to WarrenCountyNY.gov, at the very top, there's a button that says ARPA Advisory Committee, um, it's on the website slash ARPA to find it quickly. Um, we have in front of you many of the resolutions that were tabled from the last full board meeting to today. They have been reviewed more closely by our legal team as well as the planning department, and we feel ready to move forward with those from our side, obviously, I'm sure there will be discussion and debate today on all of these, um, I support these that have come through the committee, there are many from our businesses, our not-for-profit entities, as well as some of our EMS agencies throughout the county, and on that note, I have been reaching out, um, there is some disagreement about how we are going to fund those, uh, but it hasn't yet been fully vetted through the committee, um, the EMS agencies have been in the process of submitting applications through the portal which was reopened for them, and we have asked the committee to score them, to look at them, and we will be bringing them back to our next committee meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. We, I do want to mention that we met last Tuesday, and we have a, an application before the ARPA committee, which we approved for a childcare center that would be opened in Queensberry, and it's for, um, a couple dozen children, maybe even thirty. So we're very excited about that, it's not on your agenda for today, but it is something that we think is important to bring through um, our committee, and we'll be bringing that up to the full board, hopefully at the next full board meeting. And at the appropriate time, there is one, um, there is one resolution today from the ARPA committee that I, that if I may suggest, the treasurer has asked that we table that one back to committee, so I will be asking for a motion to table at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Supervisor Bono?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, County Facilities Committee met on October twenty-fifth. From that meeting, you have one resolution in here, number six fourteen. That's authorizing agreement with McFarland Johnson Incorporated to provide consultant services for the design bidding, construction administration, inspection services related to capital project H three eighty-eight. Construction, the airport T hangars, I'd appreciate your support for that, additionally, uh, we discussed the design updates to the front entrance of the municipal center. Uh, the design of that will continue, but any action on that is on hold till the spring, obviously, spring of twenty twenty-three, uh, due to weather. Provide an update, convert the former Warren County Detention Center to the Joseph Warren Center. Concept, uh, plan was completed for an estimated cost of four million dollars, and, uh, which included a museum and education center and gardens, and it was noted that there was a hundred thousand dollars in county funding budgeted for this project, so that continues on. And the referral from the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee regarding the matter of installing magnetometers in the municipal center building at the entrance, and, uh, we're waiting on, and that comes through the state, I believe, waiting on, um, the courts to, to get a new unit, we're going to take their old one and install it in the, uh, entrance to the DMV in that area, so that concludes my report, any questions?
Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman, the Human Service Committee met, um, last on, uh, Monday, October twenty-fourth. There are no resolutions, uh, this morning coming on of that particular committee meeting, uh, the next meeting of Human Services Committee will be this coming Monday, uh, the twenty-first, at or about ten forty-five. Um, I'd like to thank Supervisor Hogan for her kind words, uh, about corporate extension, uh, this morning. Uh, uh, the interim executive director of Corporate Extension, John Bo is with us. Uh, Extension is in the process of interviewing candidates for two very important positions, um, work is continuing, uh, they've been doing some, some great community, um, uh, workshops and presentations, and, uh, and they do that year round. This past Friday, Supervisor Bremer and I, uh, were fortunate enough to be invited to, um, this paid in the Field of Flags ceremony up at, uh, Fort William Henry, I thank the folks at Fort William Henry for organizing that event, it was a wonderful opportunity to, uh, uh, witness, uh, over nine thousand names, uh, of people who have served, uh, uh, our country. Um, I also had the opportunity after Supervisor Bremer read, uh, the resolution to make some comments on, on the, um, peer-to-peer program that we, uh, established this, uh, earlier this year, um, a partnership between, uh, Warren County Veteran Services, Washington County Veteran Services, and, uh, and, um, Sunita Rondak, uh, the, uh, the director of that program was present, and, uh, you know, we, we talked about the importance of, uh, of, uh, of serving, uh, the veterans that served us, and, um, that concludes my, um, my presentation, thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Fraser couldn't be with us today, she's recovering from hip surgery, and, uh, Supervisor McDebbett, is there any report as on, do you have anything on?
I don't.
Thank you. Supervisor Jurassic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met on October twenty-fourth, resulting in resolution six fifteen, six nineteen in front of you today. Significant overall is six nineteen, and I would ask your support on any of them, but six nineteen related to purchase of body wheel cameras for the sheriff's office, it's something that we've been discussing for some time, and the sheriff has been looking forward to it and planning on it, it'll take some implementation, obviously, but I ask for your support on that. Our next meeting is this coming Monday, November twenty-first, that Monday, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Dickison?
Um, oc tax met sometime. We have four, uh, resolutions in front of you today, six thirty-five is, uh, two different funding applications, uh, totaling a hundred and fifty thousand for the World University Games that are taking place this winter. Um, six thirty-six is, uh, a special events funding for the CBB, that's six hundred thousand. Uh, six thirty-seven is our annual contract with Civic Center for twenty-five thousand, and then, uh, six thirty-eight is our annual twenty-five thousand dollars to the, uh, Lake George, uh, center there on VTR. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to avoid them.
Supervisor Valiano?
Uh, thank you, um, I have no, uh, big reports, uh, just to let you know that Tourism is meeting this coming Monday, eleven twenty-one.
Supervisor Schraub?
Yeah, thank you, the Legislative Rules and Government Operations Committee met, uh, October twenty-fifth, we have two resolutions before you today, six twenty-nine, which is authorizing agreement with New York State Office of Information Technology Services to provide endpoint protection for the Information Technology Department, and six thirty, which is, um, introducing a local law titled, "The Local Law Granting Partial Exemption on Real Property Taxation for Eligible Persons Sixty-Five Years of Age and Over", and repealing resolution number two fifty-one of two twelve, and setting a public hearing for that on December sixteenth. And that's it for me, thank you.
Supervisor Wild?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, um, Economic Growth and Development met on the twenty-fifth of October, there's two resolutions that have come out of that, six twenty is the fair housing policy, and six twenty-one is the comprehensive plan. And I'm going to add a little, uh, caveat about the comprehensive plan, there was a comment made earlier about there's no funding for things that might come out of the comprehensive plan. It's my understanding that the plan is there to help set the expectation of what the needs are and help drive the, uh, ability to respond quickly to, uh, funding opportunities from federal and state resources, so if we fill out the comprehensive plan, have the details in terms of the housing wise, it allows us to quickly go after, uh, uh, funding opportunities that may come to us. Um, I would appreciate your support on that. Um, there's also two, four resolutions, uh, these are both related to the housing study. Um, they're here today because we had some delays by the state concerning our application, not the problem with our application, but we had some enhancements to our application that others did not, and they asked us to wait, um, we've just got approval to move forward with that, so, uh, those, these two resolutions are basically to set up, uh, the comfort, uh, the capital plan and hire the consultants to move forward on the housing study, and if there are any questions, uh, Pat can help us with that. Uh, finally, uh, I think it's important that everyone understand, um, I've been talking, uh, last few months about recession, no recession, what's going to happen to our economy in the future, um, the Adarantik Regional Chamber of Commerce, um, I think Todd with Glens Falls National Bank have, um, a, uh, event scheduled for November thirtieth. Uh, there is going to be a presentation from, uh, a staff member from the, uh, New York Federal Reserve talking about the overview of our regional economic conditions and focusing on business activity, labor market, labor market in upstate New York. So if you're interested, just go to the, uh, website and get involved with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Supervisor Seaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, um, appreciate the opportunity to be the chair of a special committee, and of a special committee, as we know, it's, it's a special committee because they don't meet as often, and there's usually a need for it, um. I, I chair the National Association of Counties and the New York State Association of Counties Committee. This committee was created to support the national and state initiatives, to highlight best practices and to implement as needed or desired, um, recommendations, uh, after not only attending conferences, but all of those that are sit on standing and advisory committees. I appreciate all those members of this board that have stepped up to that challenge and have joined standing and advisory committees. That being said, in front of you today, um, and only our second meeting this month, is this, or this year, is a spec- special committee, uh, resolution six thirty-one, which again highlights, um, a resolution, and all these resolutions in front of you have been unanimously passed by the New York State. And all these resolutions in front of you have been unanimously passed by the New York State Association of Counties, of which, um, two of our incredible staff members attended, as well as the chairman of the Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Jossi and myself. Um, but that one in particular should, we should be giving a big thanks to our Director of Probation, who's taking a lead at the state level, um, and advocating for not only our constituents, but all over the state of New York. So six thirty-one relates to probation, six thirty-two, six thirty-three, and six thirty-four. Those are all resolutions that support our Department of Social Lu- Social Services, of course, chaired, um, by Supervisor Driscoll, who continues to, um, put his residents in the four five and all of the counties when they're talking about needs to the most vulnerable in our communities. And, um, as we talked a lot about it today, the budget on, on most vulnerable and putting our, our constituents first. These resolutions also do that. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to have it before you. I know next month we'll be talking about some public health, very important, uh, resolutions to support as well out of that committee. And I just, for the record, wanted to also state that we had a nice discussion at NACO NISAC about mission statements. And how wonderful that our entire board has a mission statement that we get behind. Um, our communities are support for special in standing, our overall board's mission statement. And before we vote on this budget today, and before we decide that we don't want to give more time or decide again that we want to give more time to inform our public. And all of our members of this board, we should re-read that mission statement because that's who we're here to serve. Thank you for the opportunity for my report, Mister Chairman.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, the Personnel Administration and Higher Education Committee, uh, met on November third. Uh, generated Resolution six forty-two through six forty-seven. And I'll briefly run through them. Uh, one is for information technology. It creates a programmer one and deletes a programmer two. Six forty-three is Public Defender's Office, uh, increasing the salary of the coordinating attorney. Six forty-four, uh, is in agreement with Bart, Martlet, Barniff, Stewart, and Rose for legal services. Six forty-five is in agreement with Fitzgerald Morris Baker First for legal services. Six forty-six, she is to approve a settlement with the Forest Enterprise Enterprises Management, Inc. Six forty-seven is enacting local law number four of twenty twenty-two, fixing salaries of certain uh, county officers, uh, more particularly the sheriff. Uh, there was discussion at the Personnel Committee meeting about, uh, the funding formula for Sunni Adirondack. Uh, President Duffy was, uh, was there and present, uh. Nothing was decided. There's been a couple of proposals put forward. Uh, the hope was to have a workshop meeting, uh, probably hopefully in December, uh, with personnel and finance and basically the board. See where we end up. Uh, there was also discussion on filling positions for the Ethic- Ethics Board. There are five people that have shown interest. Uh, the information will be available to the committee and discussion will take place on, under the December first, uh, Personnel Committee meeting. There was an executive session, uh, to discuss, uh, pending litigation. I think there was, uh, three, three items that we talked about. Uh, the Personnel Committee also met on November fifteenth and conducted second interviews for the county administrator position. Uh, there's also a resolution that came out of November fifteenth. And that's number six seventy-one and that a managed resolution, it's five forty-seven of twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's the interim increases for part-time positions within the Sheriff's Department. And at the proper time, Mister Chairman, I would ask that we have an executive session, uh, for the, uh, about the county administrator position.
You want to do that now? Are you making an add or form a motion?
No, I'm not done with my report.
Okay.
Uh, next, we move on to the budget. As everyone knows, November fourth, I presented a budget, proposed budget to this board, which is now the tentative budget. Uh, six six six, and I didn't create that number. That's what it is, adopting the twenty twenty-three budget. Six six seven is making appropriations for the conduct of county government for twenty twenty-three. Six six eight is adopting the salary and compensation plan for twenty twenty-three. Six six nine is loving tax to the city of Glens Falls for twenty twenty-three. And six seventy is a, to introduce proposed local law number one of twenty twenty-three. Uh, fix- fixing the salaries of certain county officers and employees and authorizing a public hearing on such. Uh, as the chairman had mentioned, on November second, I was invited by the, uh, Adirondack Regional Chamber of Commerce to, uh, participate in a state of the county, uh, event at the, uh, Park Theater. I enjoyed it very much and I, I thank them for, uh, inviting me. Uh, and I believe it was October twenty-eighth. Uh, we went to an inter-county, uh, meeting in Plattsburgh. And I forget the name of the company, but anyways, it's what they were doing was, uh, uh, making, uh, electric aircraft. And they had a, they had a one there that they fired up and, uh, it didn't take off, but it definitely functions. And I think it's, they're basically going to be used for like short, short hauls. And, uh, deliver, delivering, uh, packages and products and things like that. So it was very interesting to see, uh, see an airport that's active and, uh, recruiting businesses and has businesses and was a good day. Well, that concludes my report.
Okay. Uh, Acting County Administrator.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'd like to begin by, uh, recognizing two employees who have had significant years of service with, uh, county here, twenty-five years each for Jerry Bellinger, who works with the Countryside Adult Home. And with Stephanie Dean, who works with, in probation. So thank you very much for your twenty-five years of service. That is greatly appreciated. As acting county administrator, I, uh, attended all committee meetings and, and board meetings. Uh, I sat in, um, along with the interviews for the county attorney, uh, the county administrative position. I attended the EMS Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday night because after sitting in on the ARPA committee, there was, uh, they had opened up to more of the EMS squads. Not all of them had submitted. So I went there to let the Advisory Committee, the EMS Advisory Committee, know that those applications are open. They should submit here quickly for consideration. The, uh, attended the Adirondack Regional Chamber, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, morning meeting there for the state of the county, along with the chairman and the budget officer, well-attended event. Pleasure to be invited. And also went up to inter-county, uh, and that meeting as, as well. And would, if we go into an executive session, I would also, uh, like to tag on to, to that. Um, discussion, um, yeah, as well.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
If we are ready at this, this point in time here. Let's see, we do have the county administrators, I mean, the county attorneys' report. I would think after that, perhaps.
Okay. County Attorney, you want to give your report?
Not, no report this month. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Supervisor Leggett, are you making a motion? Hold on.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive discussion. The Rumpen meetings law, section one oh five one F. The medical financial credit and employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Do we have a second to go into executive session?
And this would include, uh, what the Personnel, uh, Chair had brought up and, uh, other.
We have a second? Second by Supervisor Ronan, discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, can we delay the executive session till later in the meeting? There's a lot of people here that I think want to discuss resolutions and, and public comment on that. I mean, I'm not saying let's not go in the executive session, but let's, because when we go in the executive session, we lose everybody. And half the time we lose supervisors. They don't stick around. So I would recommend that we, we put the, uh, executive session to the end of the meeting. And allow the public to still participate in the resolutions and so forth in common. Could we have that done, Mister Chairman?
I, would you modify your motion?
Uh, I'm perfectly happy bringing it to because we do have a tendency to go on and on in executive session. So with all due respect to the public, yes.
So you have a draw to later on in the meeting, to the end of meeting. Okay. Okay. All right, no report by County Attorney, uh, recommunications.
That's okay. We have, uh, notice of public hearing from Fitzgerald Morris Baker First, um, the CVE USD I eight Baker LLC project, which is to be held on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at four P M at the Warren County Municipal Center. A letter from the New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation indicating that, um, the Free Squares Historic District has been named to the New York State Historic Preservation, uh, listing and has been recommended to the National Register of Historic Places. Resolution number three eighty-two from the green, um, oh, sorry, green. From the Fulton County Board of Supervisors, Resolution Objecting to New York State Officials Recent Legislation That Restricts Citizens' Second Amendment Rights and the Twenty Twenty-One ANCA Annual Report.
Okay, that's communications. We're doing reading of resolutions.
Reso- proposed resolutions five seventy-seven through five ninety-nine and six oh three through six seventy-one, along with the estimate of sales tax, mortgage tax report, report of equalization and apportionment, and five proclamations were distributed to the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on Tuesday, November fifteenth, meeting the requirements of the rules of the board. Proclamations before you are number forty-five, Home Care and Hospice, Hospice Month. Number forty-six, Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Number forty-seven, Diabetes Awareness Month. Number forty-eight, Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And number forty-nine, Apprenticeship Week. There are also four floor resolutions, each of which require a motion, um, to be brought to the floor. So for, uh, the one resolution, mark this floor, resolution number one is waiving the rules for number two.
Motion to, uh, bring that to court. Motion by Supervisor Regan. We have a second by Supervisor Wild. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose?
Opposed.
Want to oppose?
Um, so for resolution number one is now resolution number six seventy-two. Motion to bring for resolution number two to the floor.
Motion by brings for resolution number two. Supervisor Middebat, second by Supervisor Wow. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
For resolution number two is now resolution six seventy-three. Motion to bring for resolution number three to the floor. That's waiving the rules for floor resolution number four.
Motion by Supervisor Runyon, second by Supervisor Straub. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Opposed.
Want to vote?
Um, so for resolution number three is now resolution number six seventy-four and motion to bring for resolution number four to the floor.
We have a motion, bring for resolution number four by super, made by Supervisor Wild. Do we have a second? Supervisor Jurassic. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
And for resolution number four is now resolution number six seventy-five. Um, there are also, just to mention, there are forty-eight roll call votes. Is there, um, any, thirty-two of those are upper resolutions? Is there any appetite to combine some of those votes or do you want to go through all forty-eight?
Supervisor Wow.
That this may or not, um, go over very well. But, um, I have an issue with, uh, Resolution five eighty-two, five eighty-five through five ninety-nine. These are ARPA small business grant awards. Um, I've stated this before in front of the full board. I've stated in front of the committee. Uh, these businesses have not been vetted. Last month, some of these, if not all of them, were tabled. One of the reasons they were tabled is because the planning department couldn't go through and do their vetting. I don't think that was quite there through our planning staff, because that was never their role. But these.
Point of order, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Mister Chairman. I thought the request here was just to talk about combining any of them, roll calls. It's not, I don't believe you opened the Florida discussion. I have several for roll call.
That finishes the discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Got off my track here, um, but they have not been vetted. Uh, these businesses. Included in this list are some businesses that uh, supposedly are closed. Have unpaid taxes, are going through closures and possibly other issues. Um, in a prior resolution that was approved by the board for the dome, in front of this board, I asked to go through executive session to talk about the problems with that award of three hundred thousand dollars. That business just yesterday or the day before, I was entitled for sale.
Point of order, Mister Regan.
I believe this needs to be going into an executive session if we're going to be talking about it. I think this is way out of hand to bring this up in an open session.
Mister Chair, if I can respond, it is public information. Public information. So. I, I will do my best.
You want to vote on my point of order?
So we basically, um, gave a business three hundred thousand dollars that's going to close. And who knows what's going to happen with that money? My problem is, again, they haven't been vetted. We talk about some of the people, uh, on this board talk about being fiscally responsible, being stewards to public money, to save every penny. And we're giving money away from ARPA funds that we're not sure where that money's going to go. Is it going to go in someone's pocket? Is it going to include businesses?
This is my local vote. He's asking for a little discussion on everything. Let's speak it. It means a rule of order, Mister Wild. She's stick to the rules.
They were, uh, discussion on resolution.
Am I not allowed to speak about?
We'll go into that when it comes time.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Supervisor Bremer.
I would like a, uh, roll call vote. Sorry, just lost my place. Six twenty-two.
What number?
I'd like discussion on it at least. Six twenty-two.
Six two two.
And at the appropriate time, I do have a motion, as I mentioned before, to table, uh, one, and I would like, are you ready for that motion? Uh, Resolution five ninety-two. I would like to table back to committee, back to the ARPA committee.
Is that a motion to table?
It is. Five ninety-two.
Motion to table five ninety-two. Uh, do we have a second on the motion, Supervisor? Discussion on table and the motions. All those in favor? That moment, that. Five ninety-two is now tabled. And you want a roll call on what number? Supervisor Bremer.
Six twenty-two.
Okay. Supervisors.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Can I get a roll call on six twenty-one? Thank you.
Supervisor Middebat.
Uh, I, I'm going to agree, uh, with the intent of Supervisor Wild, uh, in terms of his comments. The world of free enterprise is normally is reserved for the best of the employers and employees in the county. People play by the rules. They pay their taxes and they fundamentally do the right thing. Uh, so, uh, I think, uh, I support Supervisor Wild and his, uh, his comments relative to this issue.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Beatty.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, table six thirty-six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one. Due to the fact that we have a recent, uh, resignation of our tourist director, uh, and his serious concerns about some of these issues. Uh, I am not prepared to vote on these today, uh, so I'd like to have them tabled and have, uh, uh, go back to committee and have further discussion. This is a serious issue we have now with the resignation of Mister Snow and his allegations. Uh, and I think that, uh, uh, it is prudent that this board tables those, uh, financial decisions at this time. Six thirty-six, six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one. Six thirty-six, six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one.
So you. Six. Now, just for clerk. There.
Six forty-one is tourism authorized an extension agreement with Lake Placid Advertisers Workshop to provide broadcast and digital media buying services for the tourism department.
I meant six, thank you, Mr. Uh, six thirty-eight, not six forty-one. So six thirty-six, seven and eight. Thank you.
Six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-six.
Motion is tabled.
Six thirty-eight.
We do we have a second to table those three? Second by Supervisor Bruno. Discussion. Supervisor Dickinson.
Um. The these. Are occupancy tax. They have nothing to do with tourism. People are confused. There's occupancy tax and there's tourism. Warren County Tourism is supported by occupancy tax. The occupancy tax committee is empowered with the spending of the OCTAC, including the money that's spent on tourism. These have nothing to do with tourism. These came out of OCTAC uh. The six thirty-eight is the Lake George Visitor Center. Down in the end of uh, of the beach road, right in the heart of the action down there, uh, it's been operating for for years. This, this is an annual payment that we pay, pay to the village, twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh. The Adonex Civic Center, this is a commitment that we've made to Adonex Civic Center. An annual commitment. We we've come to this agreement with the Civic Center. They need this money to make this Civic Center operate. And they've done a great job with it. I uh, you you just can't. Stop paying these people the money. You got to, they're in business. They got a business to run. You just can't say no. Uh, and then the uh. Uh, special events, uh, this is the same thing. This is a C R V. We've been supporting them for years. They were five seventy-five last year. We raised it to six hundred. And then six thirty-five, was that on your list?
No.
No. Okay. So so the, these are commitments that that we have made as a county. To these entities, you just can't really, has nothing to do with Al Snow or the tourism department.
Hold on. Supervisor Saber, you had your hand up.
Thank you. It, in my opinion, it would be nice to just table each one of these or discuss them individually, but if that's not um, the will of the bill. Board, what I will say about these tour or these OCTAC's resolutions that we're discussing tabling is simply that. Provided the resignation letter that we were just provided with, there were attachments that related to six thirty-six and to six forty-one. Um, I have requested to see those attachments in an analysis and had been denied or or not even responded to. I have not seen uh, the breakdown of the concerns that were provided in a three-page resignation letter. They do cause quite a bit of concern. I'm going to abstain on these two resolutions if they do come to the full board. Um, but much like our budget, it would be nice to have a hundred percent of us sit here and have a discussion about what is going on in the state of our tourism and occupancy tax community.
Okay. Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you. I was just going to reiterate the request to Supervisor Beatty if he'd be willing to amend his motion to table to three separate motions.
Uh, yes, I would.
We have a second to amend a motion. You're, you're making it. Oh, Mr. Bruno. Yes. Yes, okay. Any other discussion on resolutions Supervisor?
We vote on that.
We got a vote on tabling. I'm sorry.
Do you have more discussion?
Any more discussion on tabling the motion? Let's vote. Well, on the tabling.
For one or all?
Six thirty-three.
Six thirty-six.
Seven, three up. Hey, so on resolution, tabling resolution six thirty-six, Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Brema? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Jurassic?
No.
Ms. Hogan? Yes. Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straugh?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Okay, that motion fails with two hundred ninety-six votes in favor.
Next is six thirty-seven?
Yep, motion to table six thirty-seven, Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Brema?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Jurassic? Ms. Hogan? No. Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straugh?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
Uh, I'm going to say no uh, at this time.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon? No. Chairman Garrity?
No.
That passes with twenty, I'm sorry, it fails with only twenty-eight votes in favor. And to table six thirty-eight. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Brema?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Jurassic? Ms. Hogan? No. Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straugh?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
I need a point of clarification. I thought you just asked for six thirty-eight, but I believe the request was for six forty-one. Is it related to the ad buy?
Nope, it was six thirty-eight.
No.
Mr. Beatty, change it to six thirty-eight.
Oh. No.
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no.
Ms. Runyon? No. Chairman Garrity?
No.
That fails with no votes in favor. They're all still.
Mr. Chairman?
Are we doing roll call?
Okay. Supervisor Beatty.
Thank you. Um. I voted no on the six thirty-seven. Uh. I'm assuming, I'm assuming we're going to get the attachments, so that's. Uh, reason why I can reconsidered some things. Now, uh, can I ask the temporary uh, administrator, will, will. Will you receive the attachments from the resignation letter of Mr. Snow? Because that is pertinent to certain information, certain resolutions. I know a lot of you don't realize that, but. Uh, when you receive the attachments?
Yes.
Yes, okay, can I expect them today and email them?
I I hope so.
All that was.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Uh. Today.
Yeah, to to the supervisors, yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Supervisor Saber.
Thank you. I I want to go back to the roll call request, which was the clerk's initial question. Um. I have several that I'm asking for a roll call on that are already roll calls. Then I do have several I'd like to debate at the appropriate time. At this point in time, may I please ask for a roll call for six thirty-six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one. Six forty-four, six fifty-four.
Can you slow down, please?
So wait, let me start, let me start over a minute.
Please. Hold on.
I've got six thirty-six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one, six forty-four, six fifty-four.
Six sixty-eight. Six sixty-seven. Six sixty-two.
I'm sorry, what was the last one?
Six sixty-two. And I would appreciate an opportunity at the appropriate time. There's a couple of which I would, I would like to discuss.
The six sixty-two? That's already a roll, right?
The six sixty-two already a roll call?
When did we get off of public discussion?
Yeah.
Is already.
Okay, thank you. And the other comment to answer Ms. Allen's question.
Can we just roll through those one more time so that we all have them?
Yeah, that was quite a little.
Can I tell you again?
Yeah.
At six thirty-six, six thirty-seven, six forty-one, six forty-four, six fifty-four, six sixty-seven, six sixty-eight.
Supervisor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer the question, before we get into public debate on resolutions or hear from our public on their comments. To the clerk, I would prefer to leave all of the ARPA applications, the resolutions separate. I don't believe that we'll see enough consensus to combine any of them here today. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan, you had a question?
Yes, um, well, yeah, my, my, my question was, are we still on? Uh, discussions? Or we?
Yes.
Or do we jump over the rules or can we get back?
Go ahead Supervisor McGowan.
Uh, I'd like to go back to the infamous six sixty-six. I. I, I was really, really offended with the outcome of that vote, considering that uh, it has to deal with uh, you know, the, the. Our constituents' tax money and and it and it's just a shame. And all year, I've been able to uh. Pretty much guess the rate of votes are going to go by going around the room and 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 it's just amazes me, but. My colleague from Queensbury actually brings it up that, you know, maybe we should have some openness here and then I see that it votes against it, so. I'm I'm just a little confused from that and just wanted to say that, you know, it's just a shame. That uh, we can't get together in a, in in an evening. Anytime where the public is is paying uh, for uh, these taxes can and come and join us, so. Hey, that's all I have to say.
Any other request for roll call or just Supervisor Millian?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear anything about six thirty-five. Um. I really don't want to table it. I want a, a roll call on it because I want to eliminate right now the World University Games funding. For further um.
Are you asking for a roll call vote?
Right, but I don't want to, uh, yes, I'm asking, but I don't want to eliminate the whole um, resolution. There's other things to mind.
Asking to modify the resolution?
Modify it. The World University Games, I, I think it needs a little discussion. Go back to uh, OCTAX for discussion. But the rest of it, uh.
So are you asking to modify the resolution to take out the second award of one hundred twenty-five thousand?
Right.
That's what you're asking? Is that in a form of a motion?
I'd like to make it, yes.
Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Supervisor Onion. Discussion. Go ahead Supervisor Saber.
Mr. Chairman or Acting County Administrator, Chairman of the Tourism Committee. For OCTAX, why were these combined in the first place? We're seeing more and more resolutions that are combined, so if we're looking at pulling one out, I'd like to know why it was presented as a combined resolution. We're moving on the table and other way, not over, over moving it, so I want to keep my comments solely focused to the mayor.
We are voting on a resolution to remove the World University Game funding from this resolution.
So could you answer from then, Mr. Chairman, why it was combined to begin with?
No, I can't answer that.
Can you ask him if they can?
Could anybody at this day answer why the two?
Yeah.
Yeah, Supervisor Dickinson would like.
They're, they're both related to the World Games, uh. The Warren County Planning Department is helping with uh, getting this organized and uh, I have to tell you, time, time is of the essence. The, these are, these are happening now. People are looking for places to stay and kind of coordinate. It's, it's very involved. And we're going to be very involved in it as well as North Creek. Uh, I, I would like to keep them together and I'd like to see both of them pass. This thing is huge.
Okay, we have other discussion Supervisor Hogan.
Would the chairman allow me to ask a question of my colleague?
Can you speak?
Would the chairman allow me to ask a question of my colleague from Lake George? Um, I apologize, I'm unfamiliar with why these two are connected. One's for a planning study and one is for. Advertising for the World University Games, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, it's not true. It's to give them one hundred twenty-five thousand to the.
You can get the mic so everybody can hear.
The hundred twenty-five thousand is to give to the World um. University money for them to advertise, not for us. And the question was brought up to me, um, the advertising is being done heavily up in Lake Placid. And actually, the C V B board is advertising and I, I just um. This is something uh, I could, I'd like to discuss later on.
Follow up. So just for clarity, this is not promotion of Warren County.
Okay, no, it's giving them money.
Right, but it's not.
Add to that. County attorney would like to add, uh, he has some information.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, Larry Allen County Attorney. It's a procedural question, I think that was asked, and if you look at the actual resolution that's before the board. Uh, six thirty-five of twenty twenty-two. Historically, what this board has done is amended. The prior annual appropriation of OCTAX funding. So the reason they're combined is because if you look and you'll see the schedule there that's attached. As the year goes on, the resolution continues to get amended so that the Board of Supervisors is reviewing and in effect approving the entirety of what's been. Um, the, the total appropriation amount. Which after the initial appropriation is an amendment to include the additional entities. So for that reason, there's two entities. That are being presented to the board, but in effect, you're amending and increasing the entire OCTAX distribution. Uh. So i- if that, that's, I heard a procedural question and since my office is responsible for drafting resolutions, that's the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Ray, I had your handle.
Thank you very much. I am super in support of the becoming a sponsor of the World University Games. This is happening in Johnsburg. It's happening at the, at our facility here in Gore and we should be highlighting that as much as possible. Yes, we're paying money to the university games, but that's so that they can put our logo, Lake George area.
Right.
On their things that are going to be shown on ESPN. We talked about this at committee. The astronomical number of people who are going to see Lake George area from around the world. Even if the athletes' families aren't coming here, which many, many of them are, and we all know they're staying in Queensbury. I won't name the locations and what else was to say. But they're staying here in Queensbury, but some family members from around the world are going to be watching the games, watching their kids, athletes on T V from around the world. What better way to highlight our area? And an area of the county that doesn't always get highlighted. Why would we not spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of OCTAX money when we've got gobs of OCTAX money this year? On something that will probably never happen again? Why, I, I, why would we split this out? And if we, if we table it, what's the point? The games are in January. We're already behind the eight ball. Why would we? I don't understand. This is ridiculous. I'm not going to support removing it and tabling it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Supervisor McGowan?
I, I have to uh, super turbo that. Uh, my colleague from Grand Fall. I, I really believe so. We did, we got, I, I don't uh. I was at that meeting. I, it is. This is a no-brainer to move board on. Uh, it's a, it's a worldwide, to me, it's a worldwide uh, eventually get on and with our logo on there and. I'm super turbo excited.
All right, Supervisor uh, Saber, Supervisor Bruno, I know uh, we're worried about the public, so we can move these discussions along. Supervisor Saber.
I always worry about the public, Chairman. Um, however, this is like our, our first opportunity as a full board. I don't get to speak at committees, so most of them. So again, my question here. It's procedural, Mr. Chairman, and the question would be on the topic, which would actually put the public a whole lot quicker in front of us if we just debated what we were talking about. Which is to my point from the colleague supervisor from Lake Luzern. I think he was asking why the twenty-five thousand was being amended, was included on the hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't recall this historically. Being done because I think it opens up a can of worms where any of us could go in and request an amendment to any of these allocations. Um, I fully support the World Games and at a great time during that resolution debate, we'll talk a whole lot about why I think we're falling short in supporting them. Um, but I would defer to our county attorney that if he believes that this is the standard protocol. And and I hope that you look at it differently in the move, in the forward.
It's the way we've done it and they end up listing them all.
Different in the future so that this does come up like this.
Can discuss to make with the county attorney's office to separate them in the future, but this is the way it's always been. This is not being. Okay, now somebody else had their hand up over here. Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I attended uh, this meeting. I'm not a, a member of that committee. But I was there and it was a good discussion regarding the exposure that Warren County would receive. Lake Placid is out for themselves. That's okay. The only way to really get good exposure for Warren County was to give this money to the university game and have them put us out there, so I wholeheartedly. Endorsed and support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor to amend resolution six.
There's a motion on the Florida man, let's vote.
And there is a question.
Is somebody, oh, Super, I'm sorry Supervisor Thomas, call the question please. Okay.
Hey, this is, you want me to do? This is on the motion to amend Resolution six thirty-five to remove the hundred and twenty-five thousand to World University Games. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Bramer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Drossy?
No.
Ms. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
That motion fails.
Okay. So Supervisor.
Further discussion on resolution?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could I call, I'm going to call point of order.
Why?
Could we, could we please allow the public to speak on resolutions, if any?
Do you mind? Okay. I I maybe I probably wanted to discuss any of these resolutions. Please step up the podium. State your name and and tell us your concerns.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Shavi. I am president of the Queensbury Community Scholarship Association. Um, I oversee a board of seventeen people. Um, we have been in the Queensbury community since the early nineties. Um, my board oversees all the scholarship money that goes out to Queensbury graduates. Our primary focus since the early nineties has been college-bound students. For the last few years, as everyone knows, there's been a large shortage of workers in the VOTEC field, construction, that whole industry. Businesses are struggling to get employees who are qualified to do those kind of jobs. And we have recognized that. We've seen it. We have not had a venue to be able to provide scholarships to those students. Um, when I became aware of the ARPA money became becoming available, I quickly got my board together. Uh, we rallied a committee. We wrote an application. And this is the force that will get money to those students. We plan on providing scholarships to kids who are not going to collegeship, college. Uh, the ARPA money will be used exclusively for those students. We've brought on board two VOTEC teachers at Queensbury School. We're hoping to partner with a bunch of industries, um, including BOSI's. We're going to be reaching out to the pipe fitters, um, all local, um, places that hire, train, and get those kids involved in the VOTEC industry. Um, that's why we applied for that money. It's time to put the money behind those kids. Um, we, those kids can't afford to pay for that by themselves. A kid with a five hundred dollar bill for a night class who's making minimum wage at McDonald's, although boy minimum wage is pretty good right now, I think. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. They can't come up with five hundred dollars. So if I can put five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars in a kid's pocket and he can get into industry, make big bucks, because let me tell you something, those people make money. We just don't have people who can afford to take those courses and get involved in those industries. So we are on the agenda to be approved for some ARPA money. It's a hundred thousand dollars. My committee is going to get that money out to the community as quickly as possible. As soon as we found out that we thought we were going to get the money, we rallied our troops again. I've got subcommittees going in three different directions and I hope you will all stand by that resolution. I think it can make a difference for those those students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address public comment? Please. On resolutions.
It's good afternoon now. There are a couple of things that I've heard and I'm surprised about whatever. I don't know all the intricacies of things, but I'm here representing today a couple of things. I want to be fully transparent. I'm one of the candidates for the accounting, the county administrator. So just want to be transparent about that. My career, I have been a risk compliance and ethics officer. I'm all about being fully transparent. I've done tremendous amount of work with budgets. So a couple of things that just concern me still, I'm I just don't like the number period, but again, that's neither here nor there. The six six six. Just the fact that only fifty percent of the supervisors have had transparency to the process. I'm not saying the process is bad or wrong or whatnot. I just think you've got till December twentieth. And I think the process is flawed. So or maybe the the transparency of the process could be better. Forgive me for being negative. Um, I'm going to point out something on the ARPA committee. Um, I'm also, as ADK advisors, I'm for ARPA money. And initially, when they met, it was not exactly, the process wasn't really nailed down. So some of the money went different ways for different reasons. And they talked about being more regimented with how they pass that money out. And they came back to the very next meeting and they had a much more rigorous process. And again, people were all part of that process, at least the committee, and that's coming out today. And again, just to be clear, you guys were very generous with me in ADK excursions and I greatly appreciate it. I was initially given thirty thousand dollars on a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar ask. And I gave to the committee much more details because I followed the award, excuse me, the grant application to a T. And it was about how much revenues we lost, how much expenses we incurred, um, what our increased supply chain costs were, et cetera. So the thirty thousand, we greatly appreciate, and that was for um, our safety improvements, which benefit the, um, our clients as well as our staff. When we went back to the second meeting, um, I actually asked when the thirty thousand came out, I made clear that that thirty thousand was only a portion of the one seventy-five. And you graciously let me send you additional information. And when we came back to that next meeting and when the board or, excuse me, the committee spoke to each one of them, I was back in as a small business for the remaining or the one hundred and forty-five that remained. With the rigor and the new process where they were very regimented and giving, you know, the different businesses money, I was fortunate to get another nineteen thousand because of the new process. I hope um, you guys will support it, but I, what I, what I want to say about that is that we, they came up with a better process and it was consistently applied across all of the small businesses and anybody else that was talked about that day. I think there were a couple more um, non-for-profits, et cetera. So that's the second point. The third point, as a risk compliance and ethics officer, I'm really big into fiduciary responsibility. And again, I'm also a fraud expert, not saying that there's been any fraud here, but I'm big on transparency. And the fact that I've heard things about circumvention, um, lack of transparency, the fact that only fifty percent of this board is being heard on this budget that is definitely impacting all of our constituents. I just think you have, I know I might be repeating myself, but you have until December twentieth. I really do not understand why you are not taking that window of time and having a public meeting where, you know, the public can be part of it and also forget about, the public can be part of it, that's great, but that all of you are part of it. And that you can all agree on the things that you are disagreeing on. Again, I might be shooting myself in the foot in a number of ways. But really, and one last point. This is just because of my budget experience. Why is the budget not based on the forecasted forecasted revenue and expense of twenty twenty-two? My only, my only.
Are you in reference to six sixty-six still? Because when you're talking about resolutions, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, six six seven.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know why you're basing the the forward budget on such a, you know, two years ago. So really, my experience is you take the current budget for twenty twenty-two. We're in November. You've got a pretty good idea based on history, what your last six weeks are going to look like. And if there is a ten percent revenue increase because of sale or sales tax increase ten percent, why wouldn't you? I mean, that's just something that sticks out in my mind that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Thank you.
Oh, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing, one last thing. There are people here that have problems about the budget and, you know, the transparency. And then we have other peoples, the other folks talking about the ARPA money, not knowing if these businesses are, you know, viable or if they, what they're going to do with the money. Put in the money. They put in the clause or put in the contract that if they go bankrupt, if they sell, whatever, clawback that money and use it for other purposes. Put a clause into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on resolutions? Okay, any board discussions? Uh, we have Supervisor. Hold on. Here's why I would like to speak.
Um, in regards to six six six, I just want to, I know that we legally have until December twentieth. However, if the budget is not approved until that point, that creates a logistical nightmare for not only the county but for the towns, because that means that the tax bills are not going to be done on time. They are not going to go out. Um, that that will create not only a logistical nightmare, but it will create a cash flow problem. So I'm not saying don't, you know, or do however you want to work the budget. I'm just saying, please, do it as quickly as possible, because the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost in the long run to try to get the tax bills done and get the money back in that we need to work. Because January and February, we don't have any revenue coming in, neither do the towns, other than that tax bill that shows up. So that creates a cash flow problem. So the longer that we delay getting that tax bill out, the longer we're going to have a cash flow problem. Um, so I'm just, if you're going to vote it down today, please set up some meetings and get it done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And then discussion Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you. If you'll permit, I would just like to do a couple of the.
Thank you.
I'm my best shot. As it relates to the discussion regarding some of the OCTAX resolutions that are now roll calls on six thirty-six, six forty-one and six sixty-two, those specifically are roll calls that were mentioned. So those are resolutions that were mentioned in a resignation letter by our prior director who left without any surprising to us this week. In that resignation letter, he spoke specifically about concerns and how the OCTAX is being distributed. And if we are in fact following the law that we have voted on. I did ask for copies of the attachment so I can make an informed vote here today. There was not provided those. I was told supervisors can foil, which of course I'm not aware of, but that's a process and it takes some time. I don't believe as an elected supervisor, I need a foil to see the attachments to a resignation letter from a department head that our taxpayers have paid for. I would be voting, I would be abstaining on those three because it gives me great concern to hear just in a three-page document that we have such significant problems. And it is a responsibility of our leadership. It is also the failure of our leadership. And I would like to see many members here today think about those resolutions. Moving on to six forty-four, that resolution is asking us to consider a contract to go out for services with a attorney and his firm. I don't need to remind this board that for several years, we've continued to deal with a case very publicly when we have been sued for not following the procedures. That law firm was intricately intricately involved in that process and not going out for a public hearing on an officer pursuant to a resolution that we had passed. There were multiple concerns around that law firm and today we're being asked to vote them again. And from what I understand, and the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's up to three years. It's a one-year contract and then we're leaving it to the direction of our county attorney's office over that you know, extend it for another year or another year after then. This happens all the time at this time of the year. We say we don't have enough time. We need to get this in place. Um, but every year we're back in this situation and we're told we'll do it differently next time and it doesn't happen. I I'm completely opposed to utilizing this law firm again and we'll vote no on six forty-four. And then six fifty-four, this probably slipped by many of our supervisors and I can understand why talking about the mail program isn't that exciting of a discussion. But I can tell you this, since I've worked here in two thousand, when I came in as a victim advocate, we had a mail program and a print shop that was second to none. We continue to not invest in a way to be local within our own county organization and invest in our funds. Um, the print shop and the mail program were things that I've asked um, to see the feedback from our department heads. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen what they think about our print mail program or what they think about a proposed print shop program. Those used to be combined together, which is why I bring them back up every year. I bring this up to all of you and I'm sure in the light of all our competing interests, this actually starts to sneak by us. I'll be voting no on it. I think there's a better way to do it with our current employees. And honestly, as it relates to public comment on six six six, I think given the comments that we've heard, I at this time would like to make a motion to table six 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 to eleven twenty-three on Wednesday, which is at noon for lunchtime meeting. Perhaps the day before Thanksgiving, we will all be a little more thankful for the taxpayers that are paying this bill and for each other. But perhaps it was an issue of having a night meeting, which this board has continued to reject over and over and over. I would hope my colleagues from Glens Falls, particularly those that fight so hard for vulnerable entities. And my colleague from Queensberry who had suggested, what happens if we don't pass this? We consider voting for this. We, a hundred percent of us should come to the table. We have questions. We propose this to to cut, to to move money and he considered the fact that our treasurer would like this done as soon as possible. If there's a second for that, I would appreciate a vote to, um, to table this to eleven twenty-three at noon so that the public maybe could attend during their lunchtime.
Does anybody want a second? Supervisor Beatty?
Also.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
I have a question in reference to that. Can I ask the, uh, can I ask the budget officer a question in reference to this motion?
What's that?
Can I ask the budget officer a question in reference to six six six?
Sure.
Has any, this budget process has been unknown for months. Has any supervisor, including me, contacted you in reference to these budget issues?
Since, from when?
Well, since, I mean, we've been meeting, committee meetings, on and off we've been meeting. Whether you're part of the committee or not, you can attend those meetings. But today there was countless, you know, hours of comments about how transparent this is. There's a discussion from any supervisors with you about problems with this budget or concerns about the budget.
Since, uh, two weeks ago, since the proposal of the tentative budget, no, other than Acting Administrator Leggett, I talked to him a couple of times about this. But I haven't received any, uh, questions, got, you know, what do you need to know?
Can I, may I finish? I, I will. I haven't any, we've talked in person. I know other supervisors emailed you. They weren't unanswered. But if you don't look just at the last two weeks, you're also going to see an enormous amount of questions and answers. You also were here when we discussed this at accepting the budget. I think it's appropriate to say those of us don't have an opportunity, Chairman, of our criminal justice system we can do to attend that budget meeting. We weren't invited to those. You heard today it was a public process. It wasn't. We weren't given the dates and times like you were. We have attended as your vice chair and I think I'm the second vice chair. I don't know what it is. A criminal justice, that is my point. And I have often talked to our budget officer and I know many other supervisors through discussions, through emails, through other ways of communication, have in fact done. I'm not going to happily talk to you about later.
Thank you Supervisor Thomas.
Everyone whose budgets was presented to, it's it's an individual committee, I believe it was in September or at the committee meetings. Uh, you know, there, I I really didn't hear very many questions at that time from any, from any committee. You know, there was, there was a few that asked questions of of the department head, but half the time, some of them wasn't even there. So I I don't know, you know.
You can do what you want. I don't care. All right Supervisor. All right, supervisor Conover.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to raise a point of order on the introducing a resolution. Um, but I will say is that. Robert Schules clearly states that doing such a thing frustrates the process. It frustrates the democratic process.
Mister Chairman, the point of my motion is significantly different. It is a different day and it is a different time. And it was a little bit different intent, so it does fall within Robert Schules. Thank you.
I didn't raise it as a point of order. It continues to frustrate the process. My vote will be the same as it was on the original motion. It will be. Absolutely no, anyone that wants to participate in the budget processes had more than ample time to participate. Which includes, I might add, any amendment to the budget that anyone wishes to launch today. Which includes any amendment, any supervisor that was prepared to amend the budget could have done so today. And that concludes my remarks. My vote will be the same as it was on the original motion. I have no reason to change my vote. Thank you.
Let's, let's vote on the uh.
So this is a motion to table resolution six sixty-six to a meeting on November twenty-third at noon. Mister Conover? Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt? Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
I'm not available on the, on the twenty-second, on the twenty-third. Um, and so. I I don't see that the the public is gonna come to any meeting on uh, the twenty-third. Uh, the day before Thanksgiving, they're preparing thirty. I'm gonna say no.
Mister Drossi? Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
No.
Mister Marlino?
I will say no, but I will not be around on that day. I'm have plans already to leave the state.
Mister Straugh?
No.
Mister Wild? Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Anyone could have asked for a different date, of course. So that you could be available and notify your constituents. My answer is yes for the public.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
No.
Mister Runyon?
No.
No.
Hey, there are only four hundred seventy-one votes in favor, so the motion to table fails.
You have a question?
Uh, Mister Chairman, at this, uh, the Chair, uh, Treasurer Swan brought up and uh, one of the facts that we have to deal with. Every action that we take here at the board has a ripple. And it ripples throughout all of the departments. One of the departments right now. That has to handle what comes out of here for the budget. Is real property tax services and they service all of our towns for getting things. I would like to ask. And this is for public information. This is for information because many of you might not be aware of what is involved from today. Until the middle of December. So I'd like to ask if I may, uh, Mister Chairman, to have the Director of Real Property Tax Services come up. And just give a little schedule of what that office has to do once a budget is, is adopted here.
Is that acceptable to the group?
Uh, Mister Chairman, some of us that um, for, uh, time is becoming short. Could we move this to the end of the meeting for those supervisors that are interested in hearing? On this matter and so that some of us could be excused and so we could vote before um, the end of the meeting. Would that be acceptable? Uh, uh, Craig?
Yes, I would. Even, even though this would provide great education for all of us sitting here.
We get it.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Beatty, do you want to?
Chairman, I, I guess my answer is not long enough, so I'll. A little light humor never hurts. I had a couple of comments. Number one is I'm fully supportive of the Queensberry Scholarship Foundation. When I was on the board, uh, school board, I was probably the strongest advocate for funding. In support of vocational um positions. That was probably about ten years ago. And it, the need is now more than ever. Uh, Queensberry has a phenomenal school system. And they, uh, we constantly grade ourselves on how many people go to four-year schools. And I applaud that, but I said, there's so much more that we could be doing. There's a certain percentage of the population. That make phenomenal plumbers, electricians, welders. That are needed probably more than 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 had ever in this time in history. So, uh, I will support that ARPA funding. Uh, one hundred percent. And then the final comment on six six six, which we've had a lot of discussion on. Uh, I'm sad that we can't have an additional meeting to try to lower the tax impact on our county residents. It's a rather sad day when supervisors say, ah, what the heck? Nah, I don't wanna do that. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bramer.
Thank you very much. On resolution six uh, two-two, which was the foreclosure. I have some questions about that and I'll just reserve those till committee. So if no one has objections, we can remove that roll call. Six twenty-two, Amanda. Um, also with respect to uh, resolution six forty-one. And six forty-four. I agree with my colleague from Queensberry about these contracts constantly are coming up at the last minute. We aren't given an opportunity to rebid them. And then we are basically in the position where we have to approve them again without really having any debate. Um, I'm, I'm disappointed in that process once again. And I'm disappointed in four forty-four having this option for two additional years when it would not come back to the board. I really am opposed to that. I'm gonna vote no on those.
Thank you.
Just a minute, I'm not finished. If I may have a little one more moment. With respect to a couple of the ARPA ones. I do wanna say, and I will spare everyone from reading the website, which is what I was going to do when people are talking about. The ARPA process not. Not doing a good job or that the committee is not vetting applicants. We have spent a lot of money on really great projects. A lot of great things. The top one on our list on the website is three point million dollars for bridge repairs. In Queensberry and Stony Creek, a million for mental health and behavioral health services. And many other projects. And I do wanna say it's only two hundred thousand for the dome, not three hundred thousand dollars, which is, that one's not even in front of us today. That. Is neither here nor there. But we did have a process of going through and ha- um, having an application process. We did have our um county staff looking at some of these applications. But yes, the businesses did not all have to submit business plans. We don't know exactly what's happening with every single one of them as they go forward into the future. We didn't ask them for that. Um, there are a couple that if you look back, they have some concerns. And we tabled one and I am going to ask you to table two more um, with concerns that I have about these couple. Um, but the other ones, we better them the best that we can and as far as we've asked them to go. We wish them the best and I hope that you will support them as they go forward. I know people have particular issues on some. But I would like to ask for a tabling of five ninety-four and five ninety-six. Regarding some issues with those couple of applicants and table them back to committee. Five ninety-four and five ninety-six. It is, yes.
Motion by Supervisor Bramer, do we have seconds? By Supervisor Runyon to table. Five ninety-four and five ninety-six. Five ninety-four is five ninety?
Five ninety-four and five ninety-six.
You wanna roll call or uh, you wanna vote individually or you wanna roll call?
I think we can do it by voice vote if no one.
What's the pressure of the board?
Is there discussion? There's discussion?
For table?
Discussion, okay.
Thanks, Chairman. Uh, this is a question for the Chairwoman, a co-chair of ARPA. Will this be tabled for a point of clarity to the next immediate ARPA meeting to be put on the agenda for action?
May I, Chairman? It will be tabled. My intent is to table it back to committee for further discussion, not necessarily action.
For the next meeting?
For the next ARPA committee meeting. Correct. Thank you.
Discuss Supervisor Charles.
Wasn't this uh, tabled at the last? Board meeting that we had, the, the, on November fourth? Or the, weren't these two tabled?
Yes, they were.
And now they're back and now we're gonna table them again?
At the last, may I, Chairman?
Are you asking us a question?
I'm asking somebody the question.
Were they tabled before?
Yes, they were tabled.
Yes, they were tabled.
Well, now we're gonna table them again.
Question, answer.
Yes. They were tabled at the last full board meeting to come back to the full board meeting. They weren't tabled to committee. So we didn't discuss them at our last committee meeting on Tuesday. And the reason we did that was to give our staff some time to go through these and look at them a little bit more carefully. And they have come up with a couple of technical issues on the three that I have asked to be tabled today.
Okay, yes.
Just to, to help some of the supervisors, legally you can't vote on these three today. They have to go back to committee. There's a legal impediment that's gonna prevent the board from approving these three today. So.
For these two.
Thank you for your hopeful support in sending them back to committee so they can be resolved at committee.
All right, all those favor sending these back to committees, say goodbye by saying hi. Any other uh, resident supervisor? Sorry.
As Ms. Bramer was going on there, she mentioned that the project uh, in, was in Stony Creek. I, I just for the record, that project is not in Stony Creek. It's in the town of Thurman. Just so you know.
Could we ask Mister Weeman to update the website? Thank you.
Supervisor Wow.
Sir Chairman, just to clarify, you and uh, supervisor from Glens Falls said she was gonna remove some. Did we move six twenty-two from the vote or we just removed it from roll call?
Removed it, some roll call.
Six twenty-two was requested a roll call and Ms. Bramer said she no longer needs a roll call. She was gonna take up her questions.
Oh, so she don't.
So she does not want a roll call.
A roll call, six twenty-two.
Okay. Um, and Mister Chairman, I'm gonna continue my comments about it, but.
Specific resolutions or?
Um, sure, let me pick one. I five ninety-five, it's not specific to five ninety-five, it's specific to the process as a whole. Everyone has heard me say this. I, I actually complained about this at one of the ARPA meetings because I'm, I'm a committee. One of the comments back, when one of the supervisors in this room would said, that basically said, it's okay. If we give this money to these businesses and they fail. I think that's being a good steward. Of the taxpayers' money, which is what ARPA is. So if you continue to vote yes for all these small businesses that haven't been vetted early, to say, are they going to survive? Are they gonna be able to continue their business with the influx of this money? Without getting that validation, then we're just throwing money away potentially. But I don't want no part of being involved with the questions that might be thrown in this committee. I won't say anymore if I've set enough on this subject. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
All right, can we vote on the resolutions? Yes? And it's here, hands. Go ahead, Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you. Uh, just a clarification. I, I'm just amazed in those comments from. Someone that uh supposedly didn't read all the applications.
We don't need to hear that. Thank you.
There's nothing.
All right, let's go to our resolutions.
If you would have read them, maybe understand.
Resolution five seventy-seven, authorizing ARPA distribution to North Warren Emergency Squad. Excuse me, Mister Conover?
Yes.
Mister Leggett?
Yeah.
Mister Diamond?
Yeah.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yeah.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister Wild?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution five seventy-eight, authorizing ARPA dispersment to West Glens Falls Emergency Squad. Mister Conover?
Yes.
Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister Wild?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution five seventy-nine, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Bay Ridge Rescue Squad. Mister Conover?
Yes.
Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister Wild?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution five eighty, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Bay Ridge Volunteer Fire. Mister Conover?
Yes.
Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yes.
Mister Wild?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution five eighty-one, authorizing.
I have to recuse myself for this. I've been a fifty-two-year member of this fire company and I will not, I cannot vote on this.
Okay, ARPA dispersment to Warrensburg Volunteer Fire. Mister Conover?
Yes.
Mister Leggett?
Yes.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mister Dickinson?
Yes.
Mister Marlino?
Yes.
Mister Straugh?
Yeah.
Mister Wild?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity is recusing. Resolution passes. Resolution five eighty-two, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Lotus States. Mister Conover?
No.
Mister Leggett?
Yeah.
Mister Diamond?
Yes.
Mister McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
Well.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity? Hey, that resolution fails. There are only four hundred and forty-six votes in favor. Resolution five eighty-three, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Painted Pony Champion video. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Marlino?
I will abstain, hope it doesn't lose the vote.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
And Seaver? Ms. Seaver?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yeah.
That resolution passes with six hundred and thirty-six votes in favor. Uh, resolution. Sorry. Resolution five eighty-four, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Lake Champlain Lake George Regional Development Corporation. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraser, oh, sorry, Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution five eighty-five, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Renaissance Dining Corp. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild? Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
That resolution fails with four hundred and thirteen votes in favor. Resolution five eighty-six, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Alex Metcalf DBA Alchemy Bagel Cathy. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
That resolution fails with only four hundred and ninety-one votes in favor. Resolution five eighty-seven, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Rachel Meacher DBA Kind Cycling. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Hey, that one has five hundred and forty-four votes in favor, so that does pass. Resolution five eighty-eight, authorizing ARPA funds dispersment to Rooster Amusements. Mr. Conover?
No.
After Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Whoops. Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Resolution fails, there are only three hundred and seventy-nine votes in favor. Resolution five eighty-nine, ARPA dispersment to Tammy Lynn Mullen DBA Crafted. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yeah.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Hey, that resolution has five hundred and seventy-nine votes in favor, so that does pass. Resolution five ninety, ARPA dispersment to Puckers Gourmet. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild? Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Hey, that resolution only has four hundred and ninety votes in favor, so it does fail. Resolution five ninety-one, ARPA dispersment to Stevenson Lumber Company. Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred votes in favor. Resolution five ninety-three, ARPA dispersment to JSJ Transfer Transport LLC. Mr. Conover?
Oh, no.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild? Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
That resolution passes with six hundred and twenty-four votes in favor. Uh, resolution five ninety-four, what's tabled? Resolution five ninety-five, authorizing ARPA dispersment to eighty K Excursions. Did we do ninety-four? Table, 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 sorry. Uh, so five ninety-five, Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Marlino?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild? Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan? Yes. Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstain.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Beatty?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six oh five back to ARPA, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Adirondack Civic Center Coalition. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six oh six, ARPA dispersment to Park Theater Foundation. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yeah.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six oh seven, ARPA dispersment to Adirondack Theater Festival. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six oh eight, ARPA dispersment to the Hyde Collection Volunteer Council. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six oh nine, ARPA dispersment to Charles Wood Theater. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
This is it, Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
So.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six ten, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Queensberry Community Scholarship Association. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Staying.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six eleven, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six twelve, authorizing ARPA dispersment to Small Tales Daycare Center. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yeah.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen, ARPA dispersment to Community Work and Independence. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yeah.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six twenty one. Um, accepting proposal and authorizing an agreement with Lobella Associates for consultant to develop a countywide comprehensive plan. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstain.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
See that resolution passes with five hundred and fifty-nine votes in favor. Resolution six thirty-six. Um, authorizing Warren County Tourist and Convention Development Agreement with Lake George Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
The, tell me the number here.
Six thirty-six?
Six thirty-six, thank you. No, no roll on six thirty-five?
Nope.
I gave a quest roll call, I'm sorry, for six thirty-five. The six thirty-five.
I had it on my list also.
Yeah. Hold on, let me. Why aren't we? Let's finish six thirty-six.
Okay.
So, Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
What do you vote now?
Ms. Bramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Up, six thirty-six, we're voting on?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Something weird. Yeah, just. Mr. Merlino?
Abstain.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstain.
Mr. Beatty?
Abstain.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with five hundred and eighty-eight in favor. Um, just one second, I just need to add another one in here. Okay, this is thirty-five, I just need to get to the end. Okay, back to resolution six thirty-five. Um, mending resolution five seventy of twenty twenty-one, authorizing agreements with certain applicants for the dispersment of twenty twenty-two occupancy tax revenues. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Abstain.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
See that resolution passes. Resolution six thirty-seven. Authorizing Warren County Tourist and Convention Development Agreement with the Adirondack Civic Center. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six forty-one, authorizing extension of agreement with Lake Placid Ad Workshop. Mr. Conover? What are we on?
Six four.
Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Lake Placid Advertisers Workshop?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Um, no.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstain.
Mr. Beatty?
Abstain.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six forty-four, authorizing agreement with Bartlett, Pontiff, Stewart, and Rhodes to provide legal services.
Six forty-two. Almost six forty-two?
Oh, yeah.
Six. Six forty, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
It's the end. Forty-two. Six forty-two, amending table of organizations in Warren County Salary and Compensation Plan to create delete positions for the Information Technology Department. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier? I'm sorry, Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
A, resolution six forty-three, this is also amending the table, but this one is to adjust the salary for the Public Defender's Office. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution six forty-four, authorizing agreement with Bartlett, Pontiff, Stewart, and Rhodes. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Abstain.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
See that resolution passes with five hundred and sixty-eight votes in favor. Six forty-seven, uh, enacting local law number four of twenty twenty-two, local law, further amending local law one of twenty twenty-two, fixing the salaries of certain county officers and employees. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?[694.74]